Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Cobb County Board of Commissioners meeting this July 25, 2023. I'm pleased today that we have Pastor Avril Mortgage of the Way Church of Marietta. He will be providing our invocation, and that will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Officer Shane Stevens. For all of you willing and able, please rise for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, as your servant, I do not take lightly the divine responsibility assigned to me to pray for our leaders according to Paul. This evening, Lord, I bring before you Chairwoman Lisa Cupid and all the members of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners. I pray for all the members of the staff who serve in various capacities. On them, you have placed the honor of leadership to lead us into a brighter and better future for the citizens of Cobb County. I pray, Lord, tonight, that you will afford them divine strength as they face the difficult challenges associated with the job they have chosen. Strengthen them, Lord, and lead them as they lead us and lead their families when the work at the office is over. Lord, we pray tonight that they will have divine wisdom to make decisions that improve and enhance the health and well-being of the citizens of our beloved county. I pray, Lord, that you will build a fence of protection around them and their families so that as they serve, they will serve worry-free, knowing that they are covered under your wings. I pray that you will give them boldness and courage in standing up for the truth and standing up for righteousness even when it's unpopular. Father, bless tonight's proceedings. Bless all our citizens. And Lord, continue to let your will be done in the name of Jesus Christ, oh Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Mortgage, for that impactful invitation, and thank you, Officer Stevens, for the pledge this evening. Our meeting is now officially called to order. Before we get to tonight's presentations, we have three non-agenda items to add to our agenda, and that will take a four-fifths vote from our commissioners. And commissioners, I'm going to move that we add the following items to our agenda. The first is to present a certificate of achievement to Cobb UGA extensions for H youth development students. Is there a motion to add that to our agenda?
As in second, but I'll move to add that to the agenda.
Appreciate that. I figured, let's do this one by one in case there is any dissension. Okay? Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five-zero. The second is a motion to approve a parking rental agreement with the Cobb County School District for Lassiter High School parking at Carl Harrison Park. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five-zero. Lastly, I move that we authorize the settlement of workers' compensation claim on behalf of JT Law.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that matter? Yes, Commissioner?
I'd like the clerk to record my statement that is on file and found on page 122 of the current agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And the same for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries five-zero. Thank you, commissioners. With that, we will go into the presentation portion of tonight's meeting. The first is to present a proclamation designating July as Muslim American Heritage Month in Cobb County. For those who are here as a part of that presentation, please feel free to join me up front. Thank you. It's everyone who's here. Hey, yes, you did. Wow.
Chairwoman, if you could come here in the middle.
Okay, sure.
And then we'll have everybody, I guess.
Okay. Okay, we can back up. That might give people more space.
Yes, yes.
And they can just take the U here.
Where is the doctor's side? Please.
And some people can still hear.
Yeah, please. Over there.
Why don't we get some people over here?
Come, come on this side, please. There you go. That's good.
In a speech I share a lot, I talk about the power of presence, and you certainly have that tonight. And you certainly have the power of direction. This is the first time I've been told exactly where to stand by my guests where to present the proclamation, smack dab in the middle. I usually stand off to the side, but I receive that. Okay. Now, we're as the month of July is designated as Muslim American Heritage Month. Cobb County takes great pride in the varied religious and cultural traditions of its residents and seeks to afford all people the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich histories, the cultures, significant contributions, and shared principles of Muslim Americans. And we're as Muslim Americans have contributed to every part of Cobb's economy, to our culture, education, and identity through advancements in architecture, arts, business, culture, diplomacy, government, law, medicine, the military, national security, religion, and sports. Muslim Americans from Georgia have made significant contributions to the development of vaccines and the global fight against polio, malaria, influenza, hepatitis, cancer, and other diseases. And we're as the community has played a vital role in promoting interfaith dialogue, fostering understanding and building bridges of cooperation among diverse communities. And we're as this month provides an opportunity to reflect on the values of compassion, tolerance, and unity shared by Muslim Americans and people of all faiths, reinforcing the bonds that unite us as a country. Muslim American Heritage Month serves as a platform to educate the public about the rich history, traditions, and beliefs of Muslim Americans, promoting cross-cultural understanding and appreciation. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, encourage all citizens to participate in ceremonies, programs, and activities that commemorate and honor the contributions of Muslim Americans throughout Muslim American Heritage Month. This the 25th day of July 2023.
I am Imam Bashir Mundi, the Imam of the West Cobb Islamic Center. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, with the name of God Almighty, the most gracious, the most merciful. Islam and Muslims have had a very long heritage here in the United States, even as far back as the very first voyages to the New World by Mansa Abu Bakr of the Malian Empire. Muslim, a Muslim country, Morocco was the first to recognize America as an independent state. So, the history goes very, very deep, and we are very glad that we do not stop just at that history, but in the present day, as Chairperson Lisa Cupid so eloquently listed, the contributions of Muslims in America. Muslims have come to be part and parcel of the fabric of the American story, of the American dream, of the American success. And we hope and pray that this collaboration, this understanding, and this coming together continues to foster progress for Muslims as a community, for people of other faiths and other communities, for America as a whole, and that we continue to, in that way, spread peace around the world, around the globe. And we feel very, very honored by this honor, by this recognition, and the declaration of July as Muslim American Heritage Month. We hope that that continues to inspire us and motivate us to contribute even more to the success of the American story. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, once, once again, Chairperson and the commissioners, we, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you very much for doing this. And special thanks to Janine. She, she helps her out with this. So, once again, thank you very much for everything you do for this community, really, and for the whole county. So, we appreciate it. And we're having a gala on 29th July, and we will be honored if any of the commissioner wants to join us. It's downtown at GSU. John Ossoff will be the keynote speaker, so please come join us. Thank you very much. Thank you. And they're so excited, so we're gonna go out, take some pictures. If it's okay, so you can continue your meeting. Is that okay? Thank you.
Take one picture here.
Okay.
Yes.
As fast as we can, and maybe back all the way to the dive.
Where did you hide?
This, if you can have, what is Don? Don, can you have him come in the middle? They all work very hard for this. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Nice to see y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't find you in the other aisle.
For those watching from home, we're just waiting for people to get resituated here in our meeting room. Okay, we're gonna continue with tonight's presentations. Our next presentation is to present a certificate of achievement to Cobb UGA extensions for H youth development students. For those who are here as a part of that presentation, please feel free to come up front and join Commissioner Gamble and Commissioner Burl.
Well, first, I want to say congratulations and thank you for being here tonight. Well, I won't read each of these proclam, or certificates. I'm gonna read one and then fill in which area you were in. So, this certificate of achievement is presented to Savannah Bryant. She was on the 4H Hippology Team. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners honors your accomplishments as a member of the winning 4H Hippology Team in statewide competition. You have done exceptional work this year through your research, writing, and presentation. You developed leadership, creativity, public speaking, record-keeping, and other empowering skills throughout your time with the UGA Cobb Extension Office. Congratulations, and the board looks forward to your continued achievement. This is the 25th day of July 2023. And also Karma Kiffel was also a member of the 4H Hippology Team, and she is not with us tonight. She's not, yeah. And then also Ansley Shablauer was a member of the 4H Hippology Team, so congratulations. Next is our Dean's Award for the State Winner of Agriculture and Environmental Science, and that is Emma Bauer. Congratulations. Our state 4H Key Award winner is Venya Ganyal. Our National Conference Delegates are Venya Ganyal and Arshaya Gunjal. And our Master 4H'er in the Arts and Crafts Project is Sandhya Rashi. And lastly, our Master 4H'er in the Food Fair Project was Isaiah Pharoah.
And we also have a very special recognition for Venya Gunjal. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners commends you for the leadership you provided as the Georgia 4H President for 2022-2023. You represented and inspired more than 152,000 4H Georgia participants. In this role and as a 4H Public Speaking Master, you addressed the Georgia General Assembly at the Capitol and acted as a role model to your peers. You also earned a multitude of achievements in 4H and the Wheeler Magnet Program, including STEM Ambassador, Teen Leader, and Waterwise Scholarship winner. Congratulations on your achievement, and we wish you success in the future. This the 25th day of July 2023. Congratulations. Good job. Brittany, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I'd just like to thank Cobb County, all of the Board of Commissioners, and everyone that supports our Cobb County 4Hers. They're an outstanding group of young people, and we wouldn't be who we are today without the support from the community. So, thank you so much.
Congratulations, students. We are at our next presentation, which is to have our third public hearing on the 2023 Proposed Property Tax Increase as defined by Georgia law. That presentation will be provided by our Finance Director, Bill Wobman.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. So, tonight, we are gonna be conducting our third and final public hearing on the 2023 Proposed Tax Increase as defined by Georgia law. These hearings were scheduled on July 11th at 9:00 a.m., July 18th at 6:30 p.m., and our final one tonight on July 25th at 7:00 p.m. These hearings were conducted in accordance with state law and county code, and to be clear, this is a distinction between the budget, which only requires one public hearing, but we did have that on July 11th as well. So, with that, unless there's any questions from this board, and I'm happy to answer them at the conclusion of the public hearing, I ask that you open the public hearing on the 2023 Proposed Property Tax Increase.
Thank you, Bill. With that, I'll open up the public hearing. With the public hearing, we'll have an unlimited number of speakers that wish to address this matter and this matter only, and you'll have a maximum of three minutes to do so. We'll begin with our first speaker, and in the instance that we have a number of speakers that want to address this, and we're concerned about who's gonna speak next, you can go ahead and just get in line against this wall that's here to my left, and we'll just take speakers in, in that order. With that, Jan.
Hello, Jan Barton, Cobb resident since 1980, speaking for myself. Three things: Please lower the millage. Do not vote on the budget this week if you, and send a strong message to the school board that they must lower their millage. Fifty million dollar auditoriums, new hires, and pay raises are excess extravagance at this time of uncertain economy. Now, we have received word that the water rates will increase again. Shameful. All your decisions are cumulative. The decisions negatively impact all Cobb citizens. People are struggling. Federal COVID dollars and other unusual factors unfairly and unrealistically overinflated our home assessments. It looks like the county decided that they want all this unnecessary stuff. To get that stuff, the county had to see how overinflated home assessments could be. One mil equals $42 million. Then, the county just took the previous year's overinflated budget and added 15% to 20% to it. Then, the county seemingly asked department heads to back in their wish lists with almost no justifications. Overinflated home values will keep going up unnecessarily. This must stop. Your actions are making housing unaffordable. People on fixed incomes, veterans, seniors, disabled, and struggling families are losing their homes. Young people will not be able to buy homes in the future, all because of your decisions. Many retirees will never realize the so-called gains in their home assessments because they do not plan to sell in their lifetimes. Home prices are shooting through the roof unrealistically. Renters are being evicted in record numbers because landlords cannot qualify for homestead exemptions on their properties. Those costs are being transferred to renters. Food costs, gas, utilities, water, all up over 20%. Taxes up 18% for county, similar for school boards, similar for city. Americans pay more in taxes than they do in food, clothing, and shelter combined, yet you are making it worse with more taxes. Citizens have no place to cut. You can cut. The budget is not ready for a vote. Delay that vote until you properly cut excesses and roll back the millage, which will in turn set home assessments to a more realistic level. There are many things you can cut. County government is like Marie Antoinette. The people are starving and don't have bread, so let them eat cake. Elections are coming.
Good evening. Jan is hard to follow. My name is Robbie Huck. I live just a few blocks from here, and I want to start out with thanking Commissioner Sheffield for holding the town hall yesterday, which I learned a lot, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate this style of hearing, because I live in the city limits of Marietta, and they also increased their taxes today at 5:00. But their public hearings were basically open houses, which they should have just said it was an open house. And it was good because I learned a lot there, too. And my request is for you to lower the millage rate, because right now, what we have an abundance of in everybody in Cobb and the whole country, probably the whole world, is a lot of uncertainty. And one of the roles of the government is to help people be safe, and part of that is to know what your expenses are. And to keep increasing the property tax is hard for people to know if they're going to be able to afford to live there. And I love all of the stuff that I hear that the Board is interested in including everybody and pulling everybody together. And I do think that one of the beautiful things about having a strong community is having a diversity in income. It's important. It's just like having a lawn. If your lawn is only made up of one type of grass and a disease comes by, you're going to probably lose, if not all, a big chunk of your lawn. Whereas if your lawn is made up of many types of grasses and a disease comes by, the plants are super smart, and they can figure out how to fight the disease if they have a minute to think about it, and that diversity provides that minute. And so diversity in income levels of the people in a community is vital. And it's also fun. You know, people, when we're different, we bring different things to the table, and that's how we grow. And so, again, I'm asking, please, reduce the millage rate. Have the courage to set precedent, because one of the things I learned yesterday was that somehow it got to be policy to project what the values, the assessed values are going to be, and then work your budget backwards from there. And so I get it. You know, I understand, but I'm asking you to be strong and courageous. And I don't want to play the sex card, but as women, we're known for doing things that people don't, other people don't want to do, and I don't mean just men, but please, please consider rolling it back and then having the courage to follow through with it. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Joanna Davidovich, and this is my first time speaking at anything like this, so forgive me if my voice quavers a whole lot. I've been a Cobb County resident for just almost three years. My family moved here from Fulton County in pursuit of a better quality of life for our children and to get away from the dysfunction of the city of Atlanta and Fulton County and the ever-increasing burdens that the local officials were putting on the residents. I'm distressed that the situation in Cobb County is turning out to be much the same. How can our elected officials even consider a tax increase at a time when citizens are facing a tidal wave of new economic pressures? Inflation isn't just sneaking up unnoticed anymore. It smacks us in the face every time we go to buy groceries and pay our utilities, gas, everything. The cost of living is outpacing our incomes. We regular folks can't just vote to get more income for ourselves. It's not something that we can just materialize by saying, "We want it, so we get it," but that's what you guys are doing. We have no choices but to be creative in our own lives. We have to cut costs. We have to limit what we get for ourselves, even though we really want something. Like, we need a new car, but we've been putting it off for a few years because we don't know what the next year is going to look like, then we get our property tax assessment and think, "Well, we'll put it off for another year," even though our car is real creaky. So we're trying to be responsible and creative with solving our own problems, and I'm asking you to do the same thing, because you can convince yourselves that you just need a higher tax rate. But at the same time, our property values were just assessed at a record increase. Like, our own was up 60% in just one year. So I'm asking you to please, 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 put aside your considerations for what feels good and try to empathize with us, the people you're supposed to represent and serve. This increase is clearly wrong for the people of Cobb County. It's not sustainable, and you're hurting our ability to provide for ourselves. And that people who will feel that hurt, the first and the worst, are the most vulnerable, the low-income folk, the renters, and the families. So I'm begging you to please, please reconsider this increase, because it's just wrong. Thank you.
Good evening. Fei Shi from East Cobb. The Board of Commissioner is asking for a $19 million increase in its general fund, with $16 million out-of-property tax increase, the 18% millage rate we're asking about today. However, there is a lack of publicly available information to support such proposal. First, the additional capital expenditure budget seems irresponsible while the average citizens are struggling to maintain their status quo, to name a few. Additional $3.25 million in parks and wrecks, additional $5.4 million in property management. Second, the operating expense increase proposed at 11% grossly exceeds inflationary figure during the same period. As of June, the published CPI of 12 months' change is at 3%. As a government entity, you have tremendous purchasing power to perform way better than the average consumers. Yet, you're asking for these questionable increases, such as community development admin increased by 1,300%, energy emergency management increased by 839%, county manager increased by 253%. Last and most significantly, the proposed personnel services increased by 17.4 million, while the proposed personnel amendment only accounted for 3 million, which means the remaining 14.4 million are all for merit increase, or approximately 3.86% year-over-year. Seems kind of reasonable until you take a closer look. The general fund admin and contingency increased by 48%. DA victim witness increased by 56%. Economic development increased by 55%. Purchasing and financing both receiving 9% increase. And did you get this recommendation from that consultant you hired? What's worse? The public safety admin, the public safety training, the emergency management teams are almost entirely wiped out. Why? These increases I mentioned totals 38 million. I am extremely concerned with how our tax dollars are being spent. We have nearly $80 million of grant fund unaccounted for on this proposed budget. Are there additional information that can support these increases? Why is there a $1.1 million gap between the inter-funds transfer out and transfer details? And why is there a $1 million contingency on the BOC that's 17 times its OpEx? I have so many questions. You can only do no for this increase and way further. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ron Hammond. I'm a 30-year resident of Cobb County, and yet this is the first time I've been here out of concerns over this proposed tax increase. Now, my assessment went up about 30% last year. That alone means that my property taxes are going up accordingly. And now a tax increase? That sounds crazy. With the regular assessment, property taxes are already shooting up, just by the assessment that you did. Government-caused inflation is wrecking havoc on Cobb County citizens. Daily reminders of this devastation are apparent anytime we go to the grocery store, repair shop, or gas station. And now, in addition to the windfall from higher assessments, you seek to increase our already-high taxes? I find that unacceptable. Instead of raising our taxes, how about showing us the budget first, and then inform us what you were doing to cut frivolous spending? How much do you plan to waste on failed diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, which are causing so many problems in schools and businesses nationwide? You're going to waste more money on that? In short, please reject the proposed property tax increase. Work for smaller, more efficient government, not more, not bigger government, not more cost. We have enough government and the associated crushing costs already. Thank you very much.
Lee Pace, East Cobb. I made some notes, but probably just easier to say, "Who wants to roll back the millage rate?" Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. We appreciate your service to our county. My name is Abigail Darnell, and I am a homeowner and mother of two here in Cobb County, and I'm urging you to oppose any and all tax increases on Cobb County taxpayers. Public trust in government education is at an all-time low. Since 2020, we've seen a massive influx of American families choosing alternative education options, either homeschool or private school. Back in 2019, the Cobb School System enrolled about 111,000 students. In the year since 2019, we saw the number of students enrolled drop by 4,000 to 6,000 students. This year, the number enrolled is only 106,703 students. This represents thousands of families who have chosen alternative education options for their children since 2019. So my question is, why do we need more money for education when we have fewer students? It is my understanding that the total Cobb school budget for fiscal year 2024 is $1,448,937,972. And if you divide that number by the 106,703 students currently enrolled, it shows how much money Cobb County is spending per student, and it's a whopping $13,579 per student. Now, I was home-educated myself all the way through school, and I intend to home-educate my two children. And if homeschool families had that kind of money, we could do a lot with it. And we've never had $13,000, to my knowledge. My parents never budgeted $13,500 per student per year, and they were able to give us a quality education. There are many kids in Cobb County getting quality education on far less money, because they're getting it in the private sector. And did you know how many tax dollars are given to home education per student per year? In the state of Georgia, we get zero. And so, in addition to this tax increase on families like mine, we're still funding our own education for our own children. And I think it's not right. I mean, is it right that I should be forced to pay for a service from which I receive zero benefit? And that's the same for empty nesters and seniors, too, who are paying property taxes for the education system and getting nothing in return. So when homeschool families want to expand our field trips or extracurricular activities, we find ways of saving money. You know, you do creative fundraisers. You just do plain, old-fashioned, diligent, hard work. And that's how the private sector has to handle inflation. So the government school system, I believe, needs to consider how they can be frugal.
Ma'am, sorry. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Your time's up.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies. Donald Barth, again. And I use the word "again" with pleasure, because I'm getting to use my First Amendment rights to get up here and discuss this with you. And I do want to discuss this with you. One of the things we learn is, to build community, people have to get involved. There's a man right before me. He says it's his first time. Great. I hope more people come, more people get involved. How many times have I spoke before you? We know it's more than once. Did I ever ask you for anything? I asked for raises for the police, the fire, and the workers, just plain workers, a livable wage. So I'm asking you, does that go in my back pocket, do anything for me? It was to build community, and that's why we're all here tonight, why we're getting three more minutes to try to get you to help us build this community. Now, Marietta, Cobb County, as we look at it, has been an affordable place to live. I think I can quote something out of the paper this week, something that you said, "Oh, that little bit won't matter." Is that a possibility? I don't want to hear that crap. I'll tell you, everything matters. What matters is what we can do to build the community, and that's all I'm going to ask out of you. I sit there and I look back and I argue with people about the Braves Stadium. The Braves Stadium came in. I don't know a damn thing about economics, but I know that since they came in, the business growth has been phenomenal down through all the corridors of Cobb County. That's where the tax money comes from, and that is a trickle-down. Tax money that comes out of businesses doesn't seem to hurt as bad. It provides jobs. The businesses keep coming. Hey, we're on national news all the time from the Braves Stadium, you know? So don't think that was a bad investment, but where did all that money go? Oh, wait, let's give that Kroger over there a tax abatement. A tax abatement? It's Kroger, for God's sakes. They're going to give out dividends on their stock. I want you to listen. I need a tax abatement, too. I need everything. I've never asked you for a damn thing. I want a tax abatement. Do what you can. You know what's right, and take your time and think about it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy McCowen. I've lived in West Cobb for about 10 years. I moved here 10 years ago after watching a house for someone who lived here in Cobb. My wife had a stroke while we were watching the house. She was treated at Kennistone, and we fell in love with the care. We thought it would be great for our long-term health. I'm from Western Kentucky. They still sell hamburgers in places there for $0.60 today. I'm very frugal. In order to save up money to move to Cobb County from Clayton County, where I lived before, I worked four jobs simultaneously while going to school. I wasn't sleeping one day a week for over two years. I saved that money over a long period of time to give us the best possible chance to live in the best area I knew that would take care of my wife. And 10 years later, 10 years later, we had a failed botched vascular surgery at Kennistone that resulted in the loss of her kidneys last September. When I leave here today, after working a full-time job and taking care of my mother-in-law with dementia, I'll give her home dialysis until about 12 o'clock tonight, and then I have to get up tomorrow and do it again. So I just want you to see the face of somebody who works really hard to try to accomplish the things that they really believe in and struggles for every penny that we have. And I know that you're stewards here tonight, because I looked up some of the documentation for this group before I joined today, and I see that this comes from, this meeting comes from the taxpayer, the Property Taxpayers Bill of Rights, and you are our stewards for that. And I'm hoping to find representation here tonight, that my ability to keep up with the pacing of all this inflation doesn't fall behind. I know that the average pay increase was announced this month at 4.4% from the Federal Reserve. I can tell you that my mom didn't receive that. I received slightly over that, which is good for me, but when you look at the whole cost of this, it's impossible to keep up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Michael Kramer. First time doing this, so bear with me. I'm probably not going to be as eloquent or as impassioned as my compatriots here, but thank you, Board Commissioners, for listening to us tonight. I just want I just want to say that when I came here six years ago, right as the stadium was being built, Cobb County was a very vibrant place. It was already a pretty wealthy county in Georgia. And as things have continued to go along, it has gotten wealthier and wealthier. But the reason why is not because we keep taxing and taxing and taxing and increasing our rates. The reason why is because we made this county a place for business to come in, as a place for investments to flow in. And I feel like if we can keep increasing not even business rates, business tax rates, as a gentleman previously stated, but house rates, the rates of people's homes being taxed, more money being taken from their homes, it's going to be, you're squeezing more and more juice out of a lemon. And at a certain point, you won't get any more juice left. And especially with things like inflation, with everything going on in the world, it's not tenable. And we have counties around us, Paulding County and various other counties that are increasing. Their populations are going up. Businesses are going there. And I fear that if we continue to disincentivize people to coming to Cobb, that revenue that we're looking towards is going to dry up. And I beg you, I implore you to reconsider this rate increase. Thank you.
I want to state that these questions are yes or no, please explain questions. My name is Toni Johnson, and I live in West Cobb. Do you all understand that a large percentage of Cobb County residents do not want this property tax, this property tax increase? Many residents, how many residents need to be here? And how many voices do you guys need to hear to see that this is not what we want? What is the goal of this property tax increase? And how will it negatively affect the residents who elected you guys? Is the job of a commissioner to listen to the residents who elected them? What steps are y'all going to take to increase the amount of young Cobb County residents to begin coming to these meetings to voice their opinions? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Jones. I live in Powder Springs, Georgia. And I actually really appreciate y'all listening to us and whatnot. I didn't realize how easy it was to get in touch with our commissioners. So I think that's really great. I'm here today to ask you to lower the millage. My home in Powder Springs, Georgia, used to be valued at, $150,000 in 2014, with a mortgage of $550,000. Now, that same home in 2023 is now valued in January at over $337,000. If y'all lower the millage rate, that could help out a lot. And also, I've lived here my entire life, born and raised Cobb County. Want to raise my kid here, absolutely. We're looking for somewhere to buy a home. I love our education in Cobb County. I love our community, the diversity, every single part of it. I've loved watching it grow. If you're going to do things like increase our taxes, can we, can y'all try and find programs to come into our county so that people can, like, that pay us higher, you know? Make us some more money? I think that would be really, really great. What else? I'm going to end it here. Y'all have a great night.
Hello, my name is Kane Vandergriff. I appreciate you for hearing me out. This is my first time here, and I just want to be real quick with this. I'd like to say that I just Googled it, and it says Cobb County is the sixth wealthiest county in Georgia. So with that being said, I can see a need of not needing a tax increase where being one of the wealthier counties in the state, especially with the concerns of the allocations of the funds already. I think we could probably put a pin into that, seeing that this is not something that is necessary for the people at this time. Another thing I'd like to mention that we, I think, all see around us is that apartment complexes and buildings going up everywhere. And I've even seen them tear down the whole Burlington complex over there on, I can't remember that street right now. So, yes, fairground, thank you. So if that's a trend that tends to continue to tear down businesses, to build apartment complexes, I don't think that's a good trend that the people of Cobb County would like to see, especially as businesses are very important to us. And also, very well, if you're building more properties or you're not getting more taxes for those properties you're building. So is it not like double-dipping to build more properties and then increase the taxes? It's like, from looking at it, it seems like trying to double-dip. And so, and if I'm not mistaken, I can't remember the two chairwomen, but I do believe there are two of you that are owners of realty companies as well. So now I'm curious, do you have any stake of making any money off of increasing the property taxes and they're building complexes as well? I can't remember those names off the top of my head, so I will make sure I come back and get those for the record. But with that said, I'd just like to say thank you for your time, and that's it.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Robin Moody. I've been in Cobb County for 20 years. Good evening, Commissioner, Chairman Cupid, and all the commissioners. Thank you for being here. I know it's a hard job, lots of phone calls. In fact, when everyone got their notices in the mail, the internet in Cobb County blew up because we were very dissatisfied with the numbers that we got. I heard it everywhere, like, oh, my goodness. They could not believe how high it was. My personal property increased by $50,000. In fact, I've been here now for four years at my newest house. When I first got there, it was $1,900, and now it's $3,500 for my taxes. That's really high. When you go to budget your money every year, you don't really expect it to go up that much when you buy a house. And I think when people moved to Cobb County, they came here, number one, in fact, I think I heard it all over, is that we have low taxes in Cobb County. That's what we used to be known for. I think we're losing that one. Another thing I wanted to say is that when I was younger, me and my sister, we would go to a store. And my mom is a single mom. And the salesperson would walk up to us, and she'd go, oh, can I help you? And my mother would say this every time. No, thank you. I can't afford it right now. And I would just like to say that, on behalf of Cobb County, we can't afford this right now. Thank you.
Dan Larkin, Meadowbrook. Two things before I read this. Number one, I want to acknowledge the county employees as a citizen. And I noticed that they've been used against the people in their capacity, professional capacity, almost as rebuttal witnesses. I've said this before. Mr. Bill, the CFO, the county attorney, and worst of all, the tax assessor. These guys are just doing their jobs. And I worked for the county for seven years. That most of the rank-and-file people would make more in private enterprise. So I resent the fact that our own people that we pay for as taxpayers are being used against us. And the other thing before I read this is, has anybody noticed that there's like a landslide of opposition against this tax thing? Like, I mean, is there anybody here for the tax increase besides somebody over here in the line? Anybody here? So if y'all work for us, you're here to hear us, and we voted for you. Ms. Cupid, I voted for you. Sorry, Hill. I voted for you. And I don't know what to say. So anyways, if you believe, why deceive? I'm calling on you to plead your case. Make a plea, a fully honest plea, that fully explains the ramifications of your de facto tax increase. Do we have the sunshine law? Or does that only pertain to documents and emails? Let the sun shine on your thoughts and deeds. If you believe with all your heart that this tax increase will not affect the most venerable members of our community, whom we all know, or at least are told, that you championed for, then look the voters square in the eye and proclaim your vision. Convince them with the ring of truth that is your voice. Pour out your thoughts, visions, and hopes, and convince the people that the economic hardship you have planned for them behind closed doors and only recently brought out for the people to read is sound. Speak as I am now, without any special interest, agendas, or shifting blame to other departments, school department. This absolutely does not stand the light of day. Speak about this now or stand defeated, even in any ill-begotten victory that you may achieve.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Reardon. I so appreciate all you people. I've been coming here for years with nobody to talk to. Thank you for all coming. I really don't know what I'm going to say, except we do not need a millage increase. We do not need a tax increase. Last two years, I remember last year, we went through the same thing. Oh, well, we have to, we're going to have a tax increase because we can't decrease the millage rate because we've just got too many expenses. And I've watched through this whole year, every single meeting. And now I find out that those things that y'all vote on, they're not even in the budget. I found that out at your, Jerika's, at your town hall last week. Somebody here said that. So a lot of them, those are wish lists. And we're voting on those all the time. And then it comes to, somebody hit the nail on the head. They said, okay, you're going to increase the property values. And then you're going to back down, and you're going to say, oh, yeah, we can cover all of these things that we want, all this wish list, all of this stuff which we don't need. Like, I want one, I want a new whatever Tesla, but I can't afford it. And do I need it? No. There's a lot of other reasons, too. But there's things we've got to start, y'all. We've got to start cutting. Cutting, cut, cut, cut. We cannot keep spending. We cannot have this wish list of all this hokey-dokey stuff. We have to cut, and we have to stop spending. It is, because we're going into a big recession, and you're going to be in arrears. And we are all hurting, but you're not because you have our money. So there's other things coming, which I'm going to talk about next. But with respect to the budget, hold off on the budget. Go through the budget again. I watched last year when all the departments came, and they wanted their wish lists. And you guys think you're doing really well because, wow, you know, everybody wanted a million dollars, $5 million, $6 million, whatever million dollars. You know, and you think it's all relative. And you think, oh, well, we didn't do that, so we saved that. But no, you didn't, because you didn't need it anyway. Right? So you have to start cutting things, and you have to be responsible. And we need a millage decrease. Thank you very much.
My name is Betty Hayden. I'm a homeowner in Cobb County for 24 years. Why are the residents of Cobb County opposed to higher taxes? It is because we oppose the vision of the Board of Commissioners for how they spend our money. Your plans and visions for East Cobb are not our plans and visions to maintain a successful community, which we, the people, have built through the years. You're forcing your vision of a city lifestyle on us and making us pay for what we don't want. In the last election, 84% of the voters voted no to oppose the creation of the city of East Cobb. And yet, the Board is heading our community in a direction we don't want to go and increasing our taxes to do it. So what is the role of government? It is to align with the constitutional principles and purposes of government. You need to protect the citizens and maintain infrastructures. We live in a nation where all people are guaranteed life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Every successful person in our community learned how to pursue their dreams, work hard and accomplish goals, and then to value and maintain what their hard work achieved. And yet, our county government is asking us to pursue the government's dreams, which are not our vision for Cobb County. And also, to spend money on what we don't want to pursue and using money which we don't have to spend. So how do we, the people, address and deal with the poor in our community? Certainly not with bigger government and wasteful spending on meaningless programs that just don't work. What it takes is private organizations, churches, synagogues, to reach out, and also a caring community to help people learn the keys to success of hard work, setting goals, pursuing realistic dreams, and developing plans to accomplish personal goals. When people work hard and value their accomplishments, they will maintain what they achieve because it costs them something. Then our community will continue to thrive and grow. So this is a call for government to back off and a call for the community to step up and get involved in helping others. Together, we, the people, are what it takes to continue to have a healthy, vibrant community and not the programs of big government. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donna Court. And I hate to rock the boat, but I am a happy and grateful citizen of Cobb County. And I would like to say that I always assume positive intent. And I do seek to understand, both from my commissioners, these very valued employees. And I do hope that everybody here has some empathy. So Chairwoman Cupid, valued commissioners, Dr. McMorris, all the wonderful employees that I have gotten to know. I do speak, and I do humbly ask for your yes vote on the budget and the millage rate for the good of all our citizens. I do assume positive intent. And I do know that you all speak with great fiduciary responsibility. When you do come to your vote, if you vote against the budget, I will respect that out of your fiduciary responsibilities. I prefer that you vote yes. And I'm hoping that that, too, is out of your fiduciary responsibilities. I do worry about the motivations if any of you feel compelled to vote no. Yes, there's fear of not being re-elected. There's also fear, personal fear, for your well-being and your family's well-beings. And that's not okay.
Donna, just wait a moment, please. Please, Commissioner. Please just wait a moment. You may continue.
Whatever you all decide tonight, I want to say that I have total respect for you. And I respect the education and the dedication that you all have and the county staff. You all have degrees in accounting, economics. That's not my health, that's not my thing. I'm a healthcare person, and I'm also a senior citizen. Full disclosure, I am on Commissioner Jerika Richardson's volunteer community advisory board, much to my chagrin as a senior citizen. But I own it. And I will mention that we are the only county that still has no questions asked. If you're 62 years or older, you are exempted from the school board fees. And many people do move when they turn 62 to our county for that reason. I want to thank all of the valued county employees. And I state that this is, I hear many opinions here, but my county employees and my commissioners have knowledge. And I thank you kindly, no matter what the outcome. And I trust you, and I trust you. And I trust you, and I trust you. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Jacqueline Bedadapour, District 2, East Cobb.
Thank you, Jac. Excuse me, if you can just wait a moment. We would just ask for respect for all the speakers, even for those that have not always agreed with those of us that serve on the dais, know that I've always asked for respect for all speakers. And for those of you who are new to being here today, please understand that that's the expectation, that we will treat each other with civility.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I did some research. I did my own research. Many of the people you're hearing from at these public hearings, their property tax assessments are public record. One of these homeowners, mine included, so I'm sure people will look that up, one of these homeowners, their bill was $1,094 this year, $574 of which was for the general operating fund. The millage rate, he's asking you to roll back. But that amount, $574, has not changed $1 since 2018, when Chairman Boyce and a Republican majority raised the millage rate. It is locked in due to the floating homestead exemption, in spite of the home's increasing fair market value. This homeowner's tax bill increased by $98 this year, $8 a month, due to the fire fund portion. This homeowner's property tax bill has actually decreased by 56% from $2,474 in 2010 to $1,094 in 2023, on a home whose fair market value has increased by 73%. The effective tax rate on the home is 0.25%. A number of taxpayers you've heard from here tonight, anyone over 62 years old, fits into this category. There are taxpayers who've seen a significant increase in their county tax bill this year. These are folks who are still paying the school tax. The school tax, with a millage rate of 18.9 mils, is 2/3 of a homeowner's county tax bill. These taxpayers need to appeal to the school board for relief, not the Board of Commissioners. Through the floating homestead exemption, the Cobb County Commission has insulated homeowners from increases in property values. The school board doesn't have this provision for taxpayers under 62 years of age, and levies taxes at a significantly higher millage rate, more than twice that of the county general fund. This board should not lower the millage rate on the general operating fund at all. You have the responsibility of providing quality services, public safety, roads, transportation, parks, libraries, courts, et cetera. You have the responsibility to pay competitive wages and benefits to the county staff who deliver those services. None of this is free, and all of it's been subject to inflationary pressures. Chairman Tim Lee lowered the millage rate in his election year after putting taxpayers on the hook for the Braves stadium. He lost that election. Chairman Boyce had to raise the millage rate in 2018, where it has remained. There weren't any crack cocaine analogies made to the board back then, but you do remember the blowback and the outcry, nonetheless, from many of these same folks here today.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
Kevin Redman. Well, I know that the millage rates will likely be remaining flat year to year, and those with homestead exemption will not see an increase in their taxes going into the general fund. I know that our community, along with the rest of the world, is feeling the constraints of economic pressures. Now, I've been closer to this than most here in the process, and I can attest that I've seen that this county is running a lean organization. I am sure that efficiencies can be found to mitigate any additional financial impact on the taxpayers, but Cobb is staffed relatively low compared to its peer counties. Couple that with the fact that the board here is tasked with running an entire county's operations and remain competitive. Cobb sits in a very quickly growing metro area of counties that are all doing their best to recruit and retain top talent. I applaud this board's efforts to increase salaries of Cobb's fire and police, but everyone should remember that we still only remain at 70% market rate for these salaries. And top talent that can be retained is needed beyond public safety. Look no further than elections, parks, water, DOT. I would encourage the community to remain engaged after this vote, when we move into the biannual budget planning process. It is at this planning stage of the two-year budget cycle where real change can be made, intentional planning with a focus on the total cost of life of each project, as well as the cost of inaction on operational maintenance of completed projects that should remain a top priority. If efficiencies are needed, we should look on how we improve the resources that deliver critical services to our community. With careful planning, often a dollar spent today can save $2 tomorrow. The objective should never be just to make blind cuts for the sake of making cuts. This often leads to the squeezed balloon effect. You can squeeze one side, and the other is just going to get bigger. Our community is great, and what makes us great are the people in this community. And we look to this board to allow us to continue to be great by keeping us safe, healthy, educated, employed, and the ability just to live our lives. Your leadership here is appreciated, and I appreciate all of you who have held your own public meetings to hear from your constituents about this topic. I know it has not been easy, but I do feel that you have all at least educated the community on an incredibly complicated issue. With 30 seconds left, I would just add, I was at the last Board of Education meeting when they passed the budget, and it was kind of lonely. None of the people here were there to speak their opinion, so I hope next time this happens, everybody does show up and speak their opinion around the school board budget. You would have also found that there's a $211,000 food truck.
Hold on for a moment. We would just ask for nobody, again, to please speak from the audience. We're asking for decorum to be kept for every speaker, irrespective of what side of the matter that you may be on. I have asked this twice at this point. Sir, this is not appropriate. I don't know who's speaking to me, because there are a number of people in the audience, but, sir, this is not appropriate for you to be speaking from the audience at this time. If you do have a procedural question, we do have some staff members at the back, and I would ask that you would direct your question to someone at the back of the room who may be able to ask your question outside of this room, or answer your question, excuse me, outside of this room. Sorry about that.
I'm done, Chairwoman. Thank you.
Denny Wilson, District 4, South Cobb. Let me make a correction for the young lady that spoke before the gentleman that just spoke, when she said that when Mike Boyce raised the taxes, he didn't get the blowback, he did. I was at every one of those meetings, and he even took on the name of Tax Hike Mike. I mean, that's what they were calling him. So he got blowback from when he raised the millage. I'm not here to ask you guys to lower the millage. I'm here to ask you guys not to increase it. With everything going on right now, the prices in the grocery store, the prices in the big box stores, I mean, I used to get string for my weed eater. Before COVID, it was $14.99 for three spools. After COVID, it went to $19.99. Yesterday, I had to go get three spools. It was $25.48. So that's a 70% increase, you know, in just spool for my weed eater. So I know the effects of what happens when the millage rate is rolled back. I've seen it, and I've lived through it. I don't know what goes on in East Cobb and West Cobb, but I can tell you what goes on in South Cobb. Right now, when you ride down the streets, the trees are so overgrown into the streets that half the time, you can't even see around the curve. Now, if the monies from our taxes is going for services, as the tax assessor told me at Commissioner Sheffield's meeting on yesterday, then we need to see something being done. I mean, the right-of-ways are awful. I mean, even with the current millage rate that you guys have right now. I was happy to attend Commissioner Richardson's town hall, and I did learn a lot from her town hall. I saw things on the screen that really fascinated me. I even took a picture of it. I mean, like one gentleman said, services that you guys haven't even rendered yet, you had a couple of them on the slides on the screen. So what I'm begging you is not to increase. I mean, because if you increase, then that could be the difference between someone losing their home and someone staying in it. And one last thing, I cannot understand how some of you guys are up for reelection, and your thing for your platform is homelessness and affordable housing. I mean, how can, how can that be your thing?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your three minutes has expired.
Hi, my name is Tracy Stevenson. I had a nifty speech written up, but after hearing everybody, I'm just going to kind of go with it, something else. First of all, like David said, it looks like a pretty big landslide of people nay versus people yay. I kind of am upset that the one woman is concerned that there may be some retribution towards any one of the councilperson's families. I've been to, I think, every town hall. I think I've been to every one of these hearings. I even went to the first school board hearing where I was one of four people that spoke. Never in my wildest dreams did I anticipate that anyone at any one of those meetings was threatening or intending any physical violence against anybody. That's just a load of hooey. I think it's been respectful. Ms. Richardson, I was at yours, and I think it was very respectful. Ms. Burrell's, I was at yours, and I think there were a couple of more heated moments in that one, especially about a particular median in Holly Springs. But for the most part, I think everybody was respectful. They listened, they spoke, and they learned. And what I was, I keep going back to, I appreciate the fact that y'all are letting us speak, but I'm not sure you're hearing the people speak and what we have to say. The bottom line is, nobody wants to have their taxes increased, however the numbers manipulated, whether it's a millage rollback or not. The bottom line is, we went from a budget two years ago to of a billion dollars, which makes me choke to say billion, it's a big word. And then it's now, it's 1.147 billion that we're operating under now, and it wants to escalate to 1.2 billion. I may have those numbers off a little bit, because I know you're still working on the budget you're going to vote on tonight. But at the end of the day, I look around, and I see people that do not want a tax increase. These are your voters. They're people like me. I spent 30 years here paying into the tax digest. I feel like I might have built a little bit of the infrastructure here. You know? I feel like I've had a big part of it. Yeah, I've got a tax break now, I don't have to pay school tax. But you know, my kids graduated, one from Emory, one from University of Georgia. They got out of school there with no tax debt, because their old blue-collar dad managed to get them through school. Okay? So it can be done, it will be done, and I feel proud of most of the people in here. You know, they're after saying what they mean and meaning what they say, and the bottom line is, we want you to, we keep hearing about the biannual budget, that it is a copy and paste. Well, when I was writing the words that I'm not using tonight, when I hit that toolbar, it popped up on my screen, and it had copy, paste, and it also had this button called cut. You know? And I know it exists.
Sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Good evening to the Board of Commissioners and to our Chairwoman, Lisa Cupid. My name is Debra Herndon, and I am a resident of, oh, now, actually, I'm a resident of the new city of Mableton, but I am in Cobb County. And I came here tonight as a private citizen, but I would be remiss in not speaking for the constituents that I represent as Councilwoman for District 6 in the new city of Mableton. I know, I moved here in 2014, and one of the things that I liked about Cobb County is that it was an affordable place to live. And I am a single-income household, and I have seen my tax go up 30% from 2021 into what is proposed for 2023. And I'm sure I can speak for so many people here. I feel the squeeze. I definitely feel the squeeze, you know, because in 2021, I think my raise was 3.5%. In 2022, it may have been 4%, and this year is like 3.5%. So it's not keeping up with, you know, the rising cost of taxes. So I'm also hearing from constituents who are extremely concerned about whether they're going to be able to afford their homes, and it's a double duty for them, because it's not only just the Cobb County taxes, they're also concerned about Mableton City taxes as well. So I've had numerous calls with people who are just frantic, to be honest, you know, because they just don't know what the bottom line is going to be. And we have seen a historical shift in our economy since COVID, and as, you know, several people have said, you know, when you go to the grocery store, you see it, when you go to the gas station, you see it. And we see it all around us, you know, maintenance, you know, trying to get your homes painted, everything. I mean, things have risen just exponentially. And so, you know, considering the needs of the residents of Cobb County, I just would respectfully ask if the board would consider not increasing taxes for this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is my second, my name is Janet Peters. I live in unincorporated Cobb. Can you give me?
Excuse me, just one moment.
My name is, my name is Janet Peters. I live in unincorporated Cobb. I have been before the board before, when we had the opportunity to speak about the appraisal of our homes. I would like to once again remind you how much mine went up. I have been in this county since 1984, January of 1984. I am in the same home, so that means almost 40 years. My husband always took care of the bills. I felt like a nice housewife, who let him take care of the bills. He was an accountant, and I was not an accountant. In fact, I hate figures. But because he can be here tonight, the appraisal of my taxes came to me. And my previous year fair market value was 274,910. This year, it's 409,040. I can do math, and I can read. Math, it comes out to a 1.4879% increase in one year. And the last time I was here and spoke to you about this, you had said I could appeal it, and I had already done the appeal. And you had a tax assessors there that we could speak to afterwards. And I did speak to one of them, and he said, mm, the five comps that we gave you really don't match. I said, no, they don't match. So I'm here again. When I found out there was no appeal, everything had been closed, but there's such a thing called millage rate, which I know nothing about, and that the millage rate possibly could be reduced, that would offset the value of the appraisals and the taxes that we have to pay after that. I have no idea what my actual check will be to the county for the, for the upcoming value of my house, my appraised value of the house. I will find out, and I will be happy to pay for it. I love Cobb County. It has changed a lot since I've been here originally, and I still love the county here. It's a nice suburb, nice people. I love the South. I'm talking to you with a northern accent. I always say that to a southerner, please accept my apology, but I have a southern heart and a Yankee body and can't get rid of my accent. But the increase of 1.48%, I think is unjust. Thank you.
My name is Mary Gartrell, and I live off of Terrell Mill Road. I just have three short comments. My first comment is that my husband and I are in our mid-70s, and we are incredibly grateful that we do not have to pay the school tax. It makes all the difference in our being able to stay in our home. It makes all the difference in our being able to stay in our home. We've owned the home for 10 years. The tax has doubled in that time. The last two years, we have not been able to pay the tax outright with only two or three months of income behind it. We have to project out farther in order to save the money to pay it. But if we did not, we can still pay it, but it, it's now taking more for us to manage. The second thing I want to comment on is that I was researching this, and I went online someplace where you all have an explanation of the taxes. And I just want to say something about the optics of the way you presented it. It says that Cobb County, our millage rates are not as high as the other metro counties around us. I am not interested in keeping up with the Joneses. Cobb County, Cobb County has always been a place where you would think you can go for good schools, it's well-managed, the finances and all that, and it's not as bad as other counties. And I would hope that it would stay that way. And my third point, since I failed to write it down and cannot remember it, too bad, I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Well, great evening, everyone, Commissioners. My District Commissioner, Monique Sheffield. I'm here to simply just voice my opinion, to say that I stand with the crowd to not increase the taxes. I've been in Cobb County 23 years as a homeowner, holding down my stake, but I feel like I'm losing it now with all the increases and inflations and everything else. I'm just simply here to say, thank you for the efforts that you're putting in. I do see some improvements in my, in my district where I live, the sidewalks, but I don't want any increased taxes to make me have to work even harder than what I'm working right now. So thank you for the consideration and listening to us as your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. For our prior speaker, most of us probably do know your name. If you don't mind just coming back up here and stating your name for the record. Thank you.
I do apologize. My name is Deborah Johnson.
Thank you, Deborah.
Good evening. My name is Willie Whitmire, East Cobb resident. When I moved from, into Georgia, from my northern city, I moved specifically to Cobb County because of the fiscal responsibility that I did not see in my northern city. I've been here 27 years. My property tax has tripled from the time I've been here. I'm not 62, I don't get to enjoy any other benefits of being 62. All I can say is that, year over year, when I see my taxes constantly increasing, I have to wonder why. And then it makes me look at, oh, we did this, or we did this, or we give abatements for this, and I'm, and I, I own the business, and I understand trying to draw businesses into the, into the state, into the county. But we got to look at, when we talk about assessments, assessments are like monopoly money. It doesn't matter until you actually sell your home. So with us putting all this emphasis on how much we actually pay in our take-home pay to pay for these taxes, it amounts to real impacts to families. So I just want to say, I'm not asking you not to decrease it, I'm just saying, leave it the same. Because it's been impactful enough. We know the job market is different right now. I bet you, you can raise half the people's hands in here, they know someone who's lost a job just in the last six months. So we need to be mindful of the fiscal responsibility that we all adhere to in our own personal homes, and we know that you guys are doing your best to do it for the county. We appreciate you doing it, but we got to take a look at what we're actually spending our money on. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, Debbie Fisher, East Cobb. I'm going to give a couple of quotes, so we're in the MDJ today, from Chairman Cupid. "I don't anticipate presenting a millage rate decrease on Tuesday. The continued recovery of Cobb real estate market is the primary reason for modest growth in property values." I don't think there's very many people in the room that think the growth was modest. Data actually shows, from this past year, that 51% home selling in Atlanta were 51% more than they're worth. That's leading to a very big difference on how much people are paying versus the actual value. The study found the average listing price in Atlanta, 357,000, but expected home values were 236. This means you could be paying over 100,000 more than the actual property values. This was all based on actual data. I think we're kind of feeling that same pain here in Cobb County. Then there was another quote. "The property tax increase is minor in consideration of anything new that's being added to our budget." What's not minor, this is not a quote, unless you want me to quote myself, what's not minor is the amount of personnel costs in this new budget. The increased revenue for the general fund is $19.4 million. The increased personnel cost, $17.4 million. Matter of fact, personnel costs have increased $67.8 million since Madam Chair has taken over the Board of Commissioners. If you average it out over four years, using a round number of 5,000 employees, that's raises for 5,000 people of at least $13,555. I don't think very many of us have gotten those kind of consistent raises in the last three years. It kind of seems that this quote, reducing the rate, would take away the broad impact of some of the things being introduced, whether it's boosting communications.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
I'm not up here tonight to complain about my taxes. I'm up here to talk to you about the people that I've had the privilege in the community to talk to, who are living on the edge and tell me that they just can't afford this, they can't do this. According to the numbers I've heard, the average home values in Cobb has increased by 18% over 2022 valuations. That 18% increase is an unrealized gain for, I'm guessing, like 90 to 95% of homeowners who have not sold nor have they planned to sell. That increase in assessed value does not produce any increase in our household bank accounts. The vast majority of homeowners who live in all four Commission districts did not receive a corresponding 18% increase in our household income. If the Cobb County Commission choose to ignore the financial and economic conditions of the majority of Cobb County residents and allow this year's tax due increase over 22 numbers before you decide, I ask members of the Cobb County Commission to consider the following. Where do you suggest we cut our weekly and monthly household expense to find the money to pay for the tax increase? Should we turn off our air conditioning in the summer to start saving money on electrical costs to pay for the tax increase? How about our heat in the winter? Should we live in 50 to 60 degree house this winter to be able to afford to pay for your tax increase while your county employees enjoy salary raises that you want to give them? Should people turn their pets into the county animal shelter because they are no longer able to feed them and care for the health in order to pay for your tax increase? If we have a car, should we drive on bald tires before go maintenance to save money to pay for your tax increase? Should we stop buying presents for our grandchildren on their birthdays and Christmas gifts for our families to pay for your tax increase? Should we start selling our possessions so we can raise the magic cash you think we have to pay for your tax increase? I'm very serious about all of my questions. The majority of homeowners did not receive an 18% increase in our household income to match the house valuation increase. Many of us actually had a decrease in our income, and we're trying to cut expenses where we can to pay for groceries without increasing our household debt. Please let me and the thousands of other homeowners in Cobb County know where you think we should cut our household expenses to pay for your required tax increase. I ask you to vote no for the millage increase, cut the budget, and vote no for the school board increase since they can't control their addiction. Be the adult in the room and stop this madness. For if you don't, we must remove those that can't control themselves, we can't afford to wait for an election to do so.
David Fadul, private citizen of Cobb County. Thank you for having me here and letting me give these remarks, and thank you for making the largest de facto party in Cobb County tonight as well. You know, a lot of us take direct exception to this, and we've made, made our points very clear. A lot of them made approximate points clear in specificity, but I want to speak on the long-term trajectory here. I want to talk about private property rights that are granted to us as free citizens. You take it, you tax it, you increase it, you make it unaffordable, and then it's going to come to a point where people are going to have to sell it back, sell it back to the government, sell it back to the fourth arm of the government, which are large investment firms like Black, BlackRock, Vanguard, State Street, others, they'll all buy it back. And then what do you have? You have communism, that's what you have. Suddenly, green turns to gray, and everyone's looking at each other like, what happened here? So let's avoid that trajectory, please. I ask, you know, from the bottom of my heart today, I really do. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioners, Dr. McMorris, and all. My name's Robert Harris. I live near Pope High School. I've been a, I was born in Atlanta, been living here in Cobb County for 50 years. President Ronald Reagan once said that the nine most terrifying, terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help." We, the people, have had all the government that we can afford. In 1776, we went to war with the most powerful nation on earth over tax, over attacks on tea, paper, and paint, while actually we were taxed less than the British. 247 years later, we're being taxed by Cobb County government. Today, for many people, the result of these taxes will be reflected on their dinner table, in the medicines that they cut in half, Christmas presents, birthday presents, and school clothes for their children. These taxes are passed on to renters and to citizens who can least afford to pay. I'm a retired Cobb County school teacher. I taught generally at Griffin Middle School off South Cobb Drive. 80% of those kids are on the free and reduced lunch program. I can tell you for a fact, those parents cannot afford these tax increases, even if they're rent. Don't worry about me, I'll, I'll still have my biscuit and gravy and a cup of coffee, but I'm, I'm just asking for these poor people. I've listened to 25 people stand up here and ask you to please roll back the, the millage rate. There were another couple of people who said otherwise. But most of them are asking you to roll back the millage rate to an affordable level and to control spending. You're asking our citizens to curtail their spending again and again. Why can't you do that, which you're asking us to do? The good citizens of Cobb County, that's the question, and incidentally, that's also the answer. Please do the right thing. Thank you, ladies.
Lee Rayhamkin, I live in Cobb County for the last 23 years. I had no prepared presentation today about this subject. I'm as angry as everybody else in this room is angry, but listening to all the comments that have been made, I could not not say something or ask a question. Are you listening, Lisa? Are you listening, Jerika? I have a feeling that Kelly is listening, that Joanne is listening, that Monique is listening, that a county manager is listening. Who is not listening among you to what is being said here? There is a great deal of pain. You may not be feeling the pain, we are feeling the pain. There's been an average increase in home prices, assessed prices, of approximately 18%. It seems reasonable to reduce the millage rate to counteract that 18% increase in assessed value, so that there is no tax increase associated with these new assessments. I cannot imagine how you cannot understand the pain that is being expressed by all these people. And this is a hell of a good representation of the citizens of our county. I do have trust that you'll do the right thing. I cannot believe that you don't listen. I believe you are listening. And I'm asking you, do what's right. Don't, don't cause an increase in taxes at this point in time in our economy, which is being destroyed by our federal government. We all know what's going on, there is no secret here. There are essential services in this county that we have been fighting for, for a long time. The police services, the fire services, medical services, they all deserve what they get and more. The price of freedom, the price of safety is costly, but there are many, many things in the budget that can be cut and still provide what's necessary for our protection, police, fire, and other essential services. And there are many things in a budget that are simply not necessary at this point in I think you will all do the right thing. My question is, are you hearing? I think you are hearing. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, Chairwoman Christine Rosman. I concur with all the people that have come up before me.
Excuse me, for those who are speaking in the audience, again, I just ask that we respect those who are on the dais so that we can hear them clearly.
Thank you very much. What everybody has said so far, I, not everybody, but most people have said so far, I totally agree with. And everybody's basically saying, we're reining it in. We are reining it in, we're reining in our spending, we don't do things, and it's like you all have this other agenda that you're following, and it's not listening to anybody here. Some people here, like a couple, but for the most part, Cobb County does, is not looking for a tax increase by not reducing the millage rate. And, I mean, I, how can you not hear us? You do hear us. And, but I think that you hear somebody else, too. Do you hear what the Atlanta Regional Commission? Do you hear what the Atlanta Regional Commission tells you to do? Are you listening to maybe what the Chamber of Commerce is telling you what to do? Are you listening to what, like, after you spend millions with Deloitte and millions with Accenture and United Way and all that, are you listening to what their values are? Because I can tell you, their values are different than our values.
Sorry about that. It's okay. Go ahead, Christine, I'm sorry.
We have been reading in the MDJ, quoting you, Chairwoman. Cupid doesn't think that, or quoting the MDJ, Cupid doesn't think that county's $1.2 billion budget can afford a drop in the millage rate. What she should have said is that the county's employees can't afford a drop in the millage rate. Reducing the rate would take away the broad impact of some things that are being introduced, whether it's in boosting our communications or expanding transit services in areas that have people that are unable to go to work, is, was quoted, quoting you, Chairwoman. The transit back in 2021 was like $25,347. Now it's like $30,713 for the budget, and it's like, who's using it? Is it being used? I don't, I don't know. It would also take away from the sport of all these nonprofits combating eviction and homelessness and stretch the funding for the planned, for raises planned for Cobb Public Safety Employees. I gotta say-
I'm sorry, Christine.
This is, yeah, thanks. It was disruptive, you're right.
It was, thank you. Are there any other speakers that would like to speak during this public hearing? We'll take additional speakers.
Commissioner, excuse me, I was at a concert the other night, so my voice is a little off tonight. Commissioner Cupid-
State your name for the record again, sir.
I was gonna, after I said hello to y'all, but, okay. David Holmes, West Cobb, 29-year Cobb County resident. Commissioner Cupid, fellow Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak before you tonight. Last time I did this speaking, and I've spoke before you on three occasions, was when I met Kelly Gambrell, it was about zoning and whatnot, and I do know, and I hope not tonight, that with most of those, the decisions were made before it got to the public, so I hope that's not the case. You've heard everybody speak tonight from various backgrounds and intellect levels and ways of presenting their things, from like one sentence to a long analogy, and I'll say this again, which I've said before, I have one house that I own. I own investment property. I'm a RE/MAX agent, and I'm a taxpayer in Cobb County, and of course, on investment properties, as well as stuff in Paulding County. One house where the taxes are gonna go up, and I get it, the house you live in is set, but investment properties aren't set, and that represents any time of the years, a third of the real estate, and there's not a lot of renters represented here. The last time, we had one, and I've got that one house, I'll bring out again. So, the public in here, $165, $163 to be exact, is the tax on the raise of that. I don't, I never told you, I've got like five or six where it's $100 a month, because the taxes are $1,200 higher, and I appreciate that they lock the, what your home value is when you buy it, but most people move, 29 years in real estate, most people move, so it's set at the new value when that's sold, and when it's sold, much like when you bought your house a couple of years ago, you share with us, Commissioner, and so the taxes do go up, there's always more money, and I think what everybody looks at, whether it's millage, assessed value, which is wow this year, and it was wow last year, I think people have had enough, what they look at is that right corner of what they're gonna have to pay, whether it's the general fund, whether it's the school, and you have educated us well. Commissioner Richardson, I appreciate the time you spent speaking with me, because we do probably need to talk with the school board, but you all do meet and work together. And the bottom line with all this, before I run out of time, is everybody's hurting. The economy's not what it used to be. Not everybody's being truthful. Real estate is off, okay? And houses' values are gonna plateau, I predict this, and years ago, we went through the same thing before 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, but those of you that remember, the economy collapsed, housing collapsed, and I went before the Tax Assessor's Office and argued on my houses and appealed here, Paulding County Superior Court, Paulding County, because it hurt. I barely kept my houses, which is housing for people, housing for tenants, and I manage a lot of houses, too. It's housing for people.
Thank you, sir.
And I think everybody's spoken well today, so I don't have much more to add.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Thank you for all you do. I know it's a hard one.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers desiring to speak as part of this public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed. I'm going to have our finance manager come back up in a moment, sir. I need to take a five-minute break, and we'll come back and we'll have the Commissioners deliberate on the hearing. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We are resuming our discussion with respect to our public hearing on the millage. We have concluded the speakers' portion of the meeting, and I am now going to confer with Commissioners who can address this matter, and I'll begin with Commissioner Gambrell.
So, for clarification, we're gonna have our discussion now instead of the Agenda Item Number Three, which is the actual vote?
Typically, after a public hearing, I will give the Commissioners opportunity to ask any questions or to respond to any of the comments with respect to the public hearing, so in keeping with that practice, you've given the opportunity to speak now, but you are certainly able to speak when we have our next Agenda Item, when we have our vote. When we call, well, before we call the question, Commissioners are given an opportunity to provide any comments or remarks. You'll also have an opportunity to speak then, so it's to your discretion, Commissioner.
I will hold my comments to the Agenda Item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
I do not have any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burl.
I don't have any questions either. I do have comments regarding the millage and the budget.
Okay. So, you'll reserve that when we vote on the matters, okay? Hi, Bill.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. I just wanted you to provide a little clarification. There's been numbers, primarily the 18% increase, which obviously sounds like quite a bit, but can you just share with us specifically, what is the 18%, what is that being based off? Is that 18% of the current assessment? How did you come up with that number?
Absolutely. So, Commissioner, basically, what, the way the 18% is calculated is the proposed millage rate in the general fund is 8.46 mils, which is the same rate that it was the previous year, but per our legal requirement, we calculate the rollback rate. In this case, is 7.168 mils. The difference is 1.292 mils, which is 18% of the rollback rate.
18% of the rollback rate? Or the difference between-
That is correct. The difference between the rollback rate and the proposed millage rate for the general fund.
Okay. There has also been some concern and feedback with respect to the size of the increase of the tax rate, but if you can share with us the largest increase to the tax bill?
Okay. So, I know a lot of the public comment, the answer is it depends, because you can be one of two categories. If you're under the age of 62, 60-plus percent of your tax bill will be the Board of Education. If you are over the age of 62, which means you qualified for the exemption, then you have two components from the county, the general fund and the fire fund, and that is if you live in, outside of a city that has their own fire services. So, if you now are in that category of no longer having to pay that school tax, receiving that exemption, your general fund amount on your primary residence is locked. So, that assessment value goes up, that does not change. Where you do see the difference is if you have received fire services from the county, that does not have the home set exemption. So, if your value were to be increased due to reassessment, you will pay more. So, that is one of the items we did break out for the Board to give you an idea, is if you have your primary residence in Cobb County and you do receive fire services from Cobb County, if your value stayed the same, you will not pay any more. If your value increased by $50,000, that is a $59.80 increase on your bill. And just to keep kind of going down that list, $100,000 increase is $119, or $119.60. $150 is $179.40, and a $200,000 increase is $239.20.
Okay, and that's an annual increase, not monthly?
That is correct. That is the annual increase.
So, for example, if there is an increase of, let's say, $150,000, there would be an additional cost to the fire fund of $179.40 per year, which would equal or equate to $14.95?
Per month.
Per month.
That is correct.
Okay. So, we have the school exemption, and then we have the homeowner exemption. If you're 62 and older, can you benefit from both exemptions, or is it one way or the, one or the other?
No, you could absolutely benefit from both exemptions. You can be 62 and receive the school exemption as well as, as a primary resident, or on your primary property, you would receive the home set exemption from the county as well.
Okay. And, you know, just for the public, I am aware of the answers, but sometimes I try to anticipate what you all may be thinking and just provide a little bit more clarification for you all. Okay? I think that was all of my questions. There's been recommendations for us to roll back the millage, and I know that the school board recently had a slight rollback. If you can just give us an example of what that would look like for, let's say, a .2 mil, and just kind of listening to what everyone has to say in the increase in their expenses, I think the thought might be for some that we can roll back the millage that would be equal or balance to what their expenses and inflation has been, but, you know, just kind of walk us through that a little bit?
Okay. So, I'm gonna use probably the cleanest example, because obviously, it depends on when you bought your house, when that lock happens, but let's say you bought a home today, and it was $450,000 fair market value, so that means your taxable, taxable value is $180,000. Okay? So, if you were to reduce that, the millage rate by .2 mils, which equates to a general fund impact of a little over $8.2 million, that would be a $34 a year reduction in your general fund property tax bill, or a $2.83 per month reduction.
Okay. Okay, and that figure, again, if we rolled it back by .2 mils, that would be an average savings of $2.83 per day?
Per month.
Per month, I'm sorry.
Per month.
Or $34 per year?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks, that's all.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bill, for just all the work that you've done in getting us to this point today, and I want to thank everyone who participated in our public hearing, in our public hearings, plural, as a number of you- plural, as a number of you who spoke today have been attending all of our meetings where we've had hearings on the budget and the millage. As I'm listening to our speakers this evening, I know that there is a range of understanding, at least from the notes that I have taken from, from comments that were made, and so I want to perhaps walk back a little bit and speak about the property tax assessment because I perceive from some of the speakers that there is a thought that their taxes have increased commensurate to their property tax assessment. As one speaker shared, their home values have increased about 150%, and therefore their tax bill has increased 150%, which may not necessarily be the case. And I've also heard comments with respect to concerns about the property tax increase, taxes on their home, or their property values increasing three times since they've lived here in Cobb. And I just want to make it clear for all of our viewers is that the property tax assessment is based on the fair market value of your home. It is not a means to an end for us here at the county. We don't arbitrarily set property tax rates, and in fact, we are beholden by state law to set property tax rates based on fair market value. That means if your home value was assessed at a higher rate, it is because the fair market value of your home has increased, or the homes around you have increased to justify that assessment. This is not something that we do, again arbitrarily, or we do to get certain budgetary numbers. I also perceive that there may not be clarity on an increase in taxes and increase in the millage rate, which should seem to be one in the same, but state law requires us to consider any overall increase in the tax digest, that is the value of property. If the value of property goes up and we don't roll back to last year's property value, that's considered a property tax increase. And so I've had some people ask us not to increase taxes or increase the rate. The millage that is being presented today does not increase the tax rate. It does not increase the same millage rate that we have used in the past. However, it does recognize our obligation by state law in recognizing that property values overall have increased, and therefore if we do not roll back to last year, we have to call that a property tax increase, even though we do not plan to increase the tax rate tonight. So there have been some speakers who said, please do not increase the tax rate. That is not the planned pursuit of the majority of our commission here today. There are another, there are a lot of comments made here tonight, some of which are more appropriate to address when we do make our adoption of the budget. And our next agenda item is to actually adopt the millage rate. What I will do is I will take some time to address some further comments made with respect to the rate because we have two distinguished items, as I do want to make it very clear, particularly for you, Mr. Imkem, I was listening, but when I listen, I write because that helps me to understand and to process what I'm hearing. And so I will take some time to address as much as I can, as much as you can receive, so that there is at least some, some clarity on anything of which I perceive there's just a mismatch in understanding. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for you, Bill, to please take us to our next agenda item.
Yes, Chairwoman. So our next agenda item is to ask the Board of Commissioners to adopt a resolution that sets the 2023 millage rates for the Cobb County General Fund, the Fire Fund, the Bond Fund, the Cumberland Special Service District Two Fund, and the Six Flags Special Services District Fund, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. And just, if you can bear with me, I want to just read the rates for those funds. So the Cobb County's general fund millage rate is proposed at 8.460 mils, the same as 2022's proposed millage, or adopted millage rate. The county's fire fund is proposed at 2.990 mils. The bond debt service fund is proposed at 0 mils. The Cumberland Special Services District Two Fund is proposed at 2.450 mils, and the Six Flags Special Services District is proposed at 3.500 mils. The rates that are being proposed today are the same rates that were adopted in, as a part of the 2022 millage process.
Thank you, Bill. I move that we adopt the resolution of setting the 2023 millage rates as has been presented.
Second for discussion.
Certainly. And we'll begin with Commissioner Gambrell for discussion.
Prior to discussion, I would like to make a substitute motion that we roll back the millage rate to 7.168 for the general fund, 2.99 for the fire fund, 2.54, I'm sorry, 2.45 for the Cumberland Special Services District Fund Two, and 2 point, or I'm sorry, 3.50 for the Six Flags Special Services District Fund.
Commissioner, may you please restate the rates that you are substituting? Again, there's the county general fund of 8.460, your recommendation is for?
7.168, which is the rollback rate.
Okay.
The other rates remain the same.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second for the substitute motion?
Second.
Okay, and we'll have discussion on the substitute motion. We'll begin with Commissioner Gambrell.
I appreciate all those who have appeared at our last three hearings and sent emails regarding the proposed millage rate and the amount of money to be collected, as like you, I still do not have a clear understanding of how the funds will be spent. For example, a board member's website claims dedicated funding is being provided for commissioners to respond to cities' capital requests in interest. I am not able to see how much, nor have I been told why the county is setting aside funding for city capital request, when this board has been told we have over $49 million of capital request within the county. I do have a copy of that website to submit for the clerk for the record. Because let's be real, the first agenda item that the board approves, that is to expend taxpayer dollars, with the line item budget that has been presented to myself and those who have found it on the website, you will not be able to know if it was a budgeted expenditure or not. So where does the money come from if the documents we have access to only show revenue in and expenses out for personnel, operations, and 3.4 million in capital, which is applicable only to a few departments? Could this 3.4 million be encumbered from previous year's board's decisions, which means funding already has been allocated and collected? I have had many discussions with the county manager and finance as to the duplication of services that are known to be occurring within Cobb County, and the fact that the law states we should not be taxing citizens for duplicate services. Just recently, the board approved yet another consultant to review services between the county and six cities to determine if the county owes the cities funds for duplication of taxation. When will the double taxation to citizens with an unincorporated Cobb County end? But then we have the floating homestead exemption and how your taxes are not increasing to the general fund if you own your home. Per finance, our AAA bond rating is based on assessments, to which we are not as favorably rated. Why is Cobb County's rating based, by the bond agency, based on assessments, especially since it is not a means to increase collections to the general fund? In fact, we were told by finance that because of homestead exemptions, our collections have decreased 13%, yet we managed to collect 19 million more this year than last. While the board and staff can sit here and dismiss speakers as, quote, "their taxes have not increased," and finance provided what increases they may have had to increased assessments, which was approximately $59.80 for each $50,000 increase for the fire fund alone, no data was provided for the school increase, nor has data been provided to show impact to properties that are not eligible for the floating homestead exemption. How are those who reside in rental units impacted, or the small businesses that are being priced out of their storefronts due to rising cost of rent? Small businesses closing will impact employment and the ability of citizens to seek services within their community. So much has been promoted for all in Cobb, yet this board has yet to take a holistic look at how all taxing entities impact our constituents. While the county claims they do not benefit in collection from increased assessments, other entities do, and simply dismissing speakers is disingenuous, as they are bearing the burden of the benefits we claim to deliver at no increased cost to them. I also thought that it was the Cobb County policy that when we were in the middle of a biennial budget, we did not increase personnel cost or spending, and again, this budget proves other, or this millage proves otherwise.
I do have a question on your substitute motion. So the rollback for the general, but not the rollback for the county fire, which is where most of the homeowners will see any increase at all?
The due curiosity would be to the Cobb County Board of Commissioners' ability to spend excess dollars that are not budgeted for.
Say that again?
Essentially, we would be functioning at the budget that was approved this past year.
Right, but I'm referring to responding to the needs of the community. They're stating that their tax increase and the only real increase that the homeowners will see is in the fire fund, and so if the rollback is in the general, they really won't see that decrease on the fire fund, which is where their assessment value goes up a lot.
They would still have a decrease.
So.
Okay. It's more significant, but okay. Okay.
Well, Commissioner, if you'd like to propose the rollback to the fire fund, because many think that the way the county did the increase last year of changing the fire fund was illegal, so if you'd like to propose the rollback rate, I would let you make, substitute that motion.
No, I was just curious, since it was your motion. I want a clarification because I hadn't heard that proposal before.
Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Bill Volkmann and his team and the county manager for actually going above and beyond with me, especially to have meetings, to answer questions, and also the open house slash town hall that we hosted last week. I'm sorry that it didn't work out for me to meet with the chair until last week, when I had investigated some other options with the millage increase. There are some things on the budget that I agree with and that have to be sustainable from the previous year, however, there are other things listed where it's not the role of government to provide. This is a biennial budget, and I can't support the new positions and the things that are not sustainable. Public safety. This is the third year of a three-year plan to get rid of compression with the sworn officers, police, fire, and sheriff. There's also a $10 million ARPA funds that we all voted on, 5-0, to use one-time money through 2024. So I don't agree with putting that 10 million in the budget. It needs to stay one more year in ARPA, and I know it'll come due, but this is not the time to add it to the budget. Paying class for non-sworn employees. This was approved last year also unanimously, 5-0, and it has to be sustained in this year's budget and each year thereafter. We also have healthcare and pension costs that must be funded in this budget. Also, I'm glad to see that the water transfer is now included, which I do approve of, and that's something that I've been working on since the 2012, 2013 budget. And that is going from 7% to 6%. And then we also have the state mandate, the 811 required for DOT to cover the crews and equipment for another million dollars. If we take everything out of the budget, the $19 million is proposed, except for public safety, stepping grade, the water transfer, the paying class for employees, pension and healthcare costs, and the state mandate required for DOT, these things have to be sustainable, and most of them, except for the new 811, are carryovers from last year's budget. So with these things that must be sustainable, it's 8.1 million out of the 19 million proposed, which is a reduction of approximately .21 mils, equivalent to the example you gave on a $450,000 home, $34 a year. It's not much, but it's something that I was asking to consider, but I did not have the support from the board to do that. We've received numerous emails asking us to roll back the millage since May, since people got their tax assessments. Today, we received one email in support of the proposed budget, and we've had some speakers All the speakers who have spoken during public hearings and open houses, almost all have been against any increase. So their concerns and our concerns are inflation, being forced out of their homes, fuel costs, food costs increasing, and not being able to pay their mortgage. Personally, for me and my husband, our tax assessment increased by 17%, an increase of $73,000 from last year's. And I have, we have the floating homestead exemption and the senior tax exemption. We hear you, we are listening, and we understand your concerns, as we have the same. To me, the only way to stop the overspending is to roll back the millage to revenue neutral, which takes the general fund from 8.46 to 7.168 and make the necessary cuts. For three years, we have, for three years, we have spent hundreds of millions of dollars on COVID-related issues to help people and businesses get back on their feet during the pandemic and beyond. CARES Act money, ERA 1 and 2 for rental assistance, and ARPA funds and business grants. If the proposed budget passes and the $10 million for the public safety that's now in the ARPA money goes back into the budget, I recommend that those funds go back to funding county infrastructure for DOT and water. Cobb has always been the county that other counties looked up to, but we're going in a downward spiral that needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a clarification on the website that referenced capital to, to the cities. I'm not familiar with that. Commissioner.
Would you like me to show you the document, or would you like me to say it publicly?
Publicly.
Publicly.
I found it on the website, Lisa Cupid Cobb Chair. It was printed at 2:03 this afternoon.
And what does it state?
Right here, it's on investment. It says dedicated funding for commissioners to respond to cities' capital requests and interest.
And that may have been a typo. So in last year's budget, each commissioner was allocated a million dollars for responding to capital requests in her district, which I believe each of the commissioners utilized to address exigent needs that have come before them. So it was just stating that that was accomplished last year.
Oh, okay, okay. I guess I was just thrown off by city.
Me too.
Capital.
Yeah, I think it's a typo.
It appears that if you replace that phrase with county, it would be consistent.
Okay.
But then again, for clarification, where is it in this budget that it shows that we each have a million dollars to spend on capital improvements for our constituents? What is in the budget, and what I have had to review? Bill, can you please show me where that is in this document?
So Commissioner, there is not a million dollars for each of district commissioners in the budget?
That was the last. That was, again, commissioners, if you recall, last year, that was part of the fund balance that was left over, that we were able to work with staff in allocating funding for the departments and for the commissioners, as we often have commissioner requests that go unmet in response to constituent needs, because we allocate matters directly to the departments. So last year, I believe each commissioner, including Commissioner Garmbrill, allocated money towards capital for, for her district.
Right, and for District 4, for the sake of transparency, half of that is going to an expansion at the South Cobb Regional Library, and also to fill in sidewalk gaps at Floyd Middle School.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll be happy to clarify where mine went. The majority of it went to the ramp at Bell's Ferry, 575, and then a DOT project, and then the other went to precinct 6 capital. And I'm still short.
I had several requests come in from different community organizations, including Powers Ferry Corridor, certainly Parks and Recreation in the East Cobb area with Hyde Farm Park, library, as well, an expansion with libraries. What's that? There's a dog park as well that's coming. What's that? So yes, that's where, and some, yeah, the Powers Ferry Corridor, they had been asking for bus stop renovations for many years, for ADA compliance and lighting. So, thank you.
Commissioner Garmbrill?
All right, thank you. I just want to clarify again, each commissioner was allocated funds that each district commissioner utilized.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I have so many notes here, I'm not sure what to address first, or even if some things should be addressed, but I'll just stick with what I have written. But before I share those items in my thought bubble, I want to thank all of you who have participated in our millage and budget hearings. Thank you for traveling, considering the fluctuating cost of gas. Thank you for your emails and phone calls. I sincerely appreciate your feedback and concerns and opinions on how best the county should move forward. I would be remiss if I did not thank our remarkable finance staff, Bill Volkman and Buddy Tazar and their team, to our tax assessors and commissioner for attending our community meetings, and of course, to our county manager, Dr. McMorris, who serves as the nucleus during this budget season. And finally, to my fellow board members for working collaboratively to ensure that we meet the needs of all Cobb Countyans and not just those in our respective districts. So now on to my thought bubble. On the surface, we advocate, or we provide talking points for those that are hurting, but we can't bring ourselves to support initiatives that will provide aid to those who hurt. Human beings that have served this country, or those that might have had catastrophic occurrences in their lives beyond their control, such as a tornado, or house or apartment fire. And for those that don't know my story, my family suffered devastation from a house fire when I was 10 years old. By all accounts, I would be that person that you would advocate for, but fall shy of helping. The Good Book tells us not to forget to do good and share with others, for with such sacrifices, God is pleased. Had it not been for the sacrifice of others, I might not be here with you today. I was disturbed by the round of applause by some of the comments that were made. There was a reference to D E N I efforts and the failed efforts of D E N I. And following that comment was a round of applause, which further confirms for me the need for us to move forward with that study. Because regardless of what you think about it, to applaud failure for any effort of this board in moving this county forward is saddening. And as much as we pride ourselves, Cobb County, on being the best, some of what I heard tonight and, and other nights, it's not showing our best. There was applause that there's vibrant community, I think the person shared in East Cobb, and that it is the community's responsibility to help the quote-unquote "poor." But I'm just wondering if that community has actually reached out to help the poor. There's a lot of references and correlations made to affordable housing and the tax increases, and I'll share with you, as a real estate broker, what's happening now is not something that just started happening. When the market tanked in 2007, out came the real estate investors, the REITs or the Real Estate Investment Trust, hedge fund managers, Wall Street. Everybody thought it was a great idea at the time, because after all, we are a capitalistic society. But as a result, property values and assessments began to increase, because now you have the REITs that are coming in, and they're purchasing homes $50,000 to $60,000 above market. So if you sell your house for $400,000, in reality, it's only worth $350,000, your neighbor now is going to sell his or her house for 400 or greater. So it's not the county that sets the value for your property, it's the public, and what the public is willing to pay. That's how your values are set. There are approximately 785,000 residents in Cobb County, and Cobb is branded as a great place to raise families, and people are drawn to experience what many of us have experienced over the last several decades. With the growth of the county comes an increase in services, amenities, road improvements, parks, green space, and public safety. We hear you and we are listening to you. There was a speaker earlier that simply asked one question, and that question was, is there anyone here that would like a, an increase in their taxes, or would like for us not to increase the taxes? Nearly every hand in the room was raised, I get that. It was shared that 62% of your taxes go to the school board. And this may be outside of procedure, I won't ask you to raise your hand, but for all of those that raised their hands earlier, I'm just curious to know if you have also voiced your concerns to the school board, because that's where the majority of your taxes are going. And for those of you that have, I commend you and applaud you for doing that. The Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education, we are two separate entities. We do not control the millage rate increases with the Board of Education. They are at a whopping, or they are at 18.9 mils, 18.9. Cobb County is still at 7, and with the potential increase, it'll be 8. Pardon me. It was mentioned earlier that we are a board of women, and perhaps we would list it more intently, perhaps maybe that's why we, we have more speakers than they do at the school board. But I encourage you, I encourage you to be more vocal at the school board meetings, because that's where the majority of your financial or your tax burden comes from. So, we hear you and we are listening to all of you. We are sensitive to the current economic conditions and its impact. This is undoubtedly a tough time for all of us. My colleagues and I are not exempt from inflation or the increased cost of living. We are not exempt from the increase in property assessment, or the increase in our property We, as well as our families and neighbors, are not exempt from the pinch of inflation or any hurt that might be associated with it. Many of us on this board are not exempt from the school tax. We are not, again, exempt from the pinch of inflation or any hurt that might be associated with it. However, we are being asked to consider something that will bring greater hurt to the residents and employees of Cobb County. It was mentioned earlier to have courage. Courage is not only doing those things that the majority wants us to do, but courage is also doing those things that are not necessarily popular for the greater good of everyone in Cobb County. I'm not sure how the vote will go today, this evening, but what I will share is careful thought and consideration is given to everything that we do on this board. Some may not agree with that, and I get that. But when I make a decision for this county, I do not look through the lens of Democrat or Republican. I look through the lens of what is right and what is wrong for the residents and employees of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, I just want to clarify that before you is a substitute motion to roll back the general fund millage rate to the 2022 adopted millage rate of 7.168, and to keep the county fire millage rate, the county bond debt service, the Cumberland Special Service District, and the Six Flags Special Service District rates the same. Before we vote on that substitute motion for that rollback rate, I would like to talk through what impacts that could have for us, and Bill, if you don't mind, pulling up our budget for next year.
Sure. So Chairwoman, before we do that, I do want to mention again, we're voting on the 2023 millage rate for fiscal year that ends September 30th.
Yes.
So within that, we had a significant increase in property taxes. So just as a reminder, as we get ready to pull that up, so we're, we're going to be talking about two separate issues.
Two different, yes.
2023 millage rate.
Yes.
For this fiscal year.
Correct.
And then a separate issue that we'll be considering later is the 2024 bu, vote budget, that we'll be discussing at a later time.
Correct.
Okay.
I just want to finish my statement first, please. Thank you. So when we do set our millage, commissioners, we are also setting up next year's budget. So I want you to be mindful, should we roll back this rate, we would commensurately be considering cuts to what is being proposed for the next year, because this is, these are not arbitrary numbers, even though we're looking backwards.
And Chairwoman, also to that point, is it would be a reduction for '23. So that is one of those items that we look at, is, you know, if you go back to the '23 adoption, there was a $51 million increase in the property tax line, and the .129 mil decrease is roughly $54.4 million.
And what's the implication of that, Bill?
That means you're, if you spend everything that, as a, as the county goes through the '23 year, if everything is spent, you will generate a significant net loss in 2023.
So the millage rate that is being asked to be considered for the substitute motion would result in a loss for the past year, which would require us to even look at additional cuts beyond what's in front of you.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the substitute motion? Commissioner Garmbrill?
So Bill, a lot of discussion has been had on fund balance, and I know at one point you had said that we were close to 48% of fund balance. So what is the dollar amount of fund balance, not, not including ARPA, not including SPOST and everything else that we had thrown into that $800 million number that was given, I think, a week ago? So what is the amount of fund balance available, and would that be significant enough or sufficient enough to cover not, or continuing with the rollback of the millage rate?
Yes, bear with me one second as I pull up the, the county's annual report for last Okay, so, sorry, bear with me one second. So when we look at fund balance, the county has always adopted the, the philosophy, as we typically look at general fund, which is what we're typically, what we're discussing here tonight. So when we go to the general fund 2022 audited financial statements, the unassigned fund balance is 256 million. But I do want to caveat that, within the general fund, 244 million of that fund balance number is property taxes receivable, which means you do not have cash. So that's just one of those things, as we walk through that, is of that, most of which is receivable at the end of the fiscal year because of where our tax bills are due. So when we look at, when we talk about a 45% general fund fund balance, and this is the, under the old methodology of the rating agencies, is they simply look at the unassigned fund balance, and they take that as a percentage of the oval, the revenues actually collected. So we're at 43, 45% in 2022. Now, we have had our ratings meetings, and we shared that with the commissioners, is they have taken a more global approach to that methodology, where they look at all the revenues within the county, but they still only count a handful of fund balance categories, general fund still being the primary. They selected some unique ones. I honestly can't give you the rationale for it, but a parking deck fund was one of them. And then we also look at the Galleria unassigned fund balance, but then we compare that against all revenues, including the water fund, but we don't get to count any of their fund balance or retained earnings. So that puts us at So that puts us at roughly 38% under the new methodology, which is still, regardless of methodology you use, we are still far below, like AAA counties. That is one of the areas that we score a double A rating in, in the scorecard, and to the point of the receivables, we score a triple B in liquidity, which is generating, basically our cash position at the end of the year. So those are our two big areas that we struggle at. And I will absolutely say, general fund fund balance is much improved to where it was in 2018. We have made significant strides. Since then, we've stopped borrowing TANs. Cash position has improved. Still scores a triple B as of 2022. So that is one of our challenges as we walk through this.
So what I'm kind of hearing you saying that is if we didn't want to tip into the fund balance, which we have more than 38%, I think you said, and we had a policy that I think was put in place for 35?
So...
Or was it 30?
We actually did a policy of 25 under the old methodology, and if we're going to stay with that, because that's how we measured policy, we're at 43%, 45%. So we are above policy. Now, what we still know is we set, and preliminary policy is the first time in the history of Cobb County to even have a policy. So we shot low, and I think Commissioner Gamble, you were one of the advocates of looking at increasing that over a period of time, and I personally agree with you. I think we should increase that over a period of time to something more realistic, because if we're at 25%, we're borrowing TANs, our fund balance is too low, and our cash is too low. So those are two areas that it's a policy, and it's great to have, it's artificially low.
Right, and while it's policy and great to have, we have nothing in that policy to prevent the board from spending that on something.
That is correct.
So, so I guess the question is, is if we don't choose to spend it to have this millage rollback, would we have to borrow a TANs? And essentially what I'm hearing, we would be spending, we would have to borrow about, what, 50 million per TANs?
So I can say it's a 50 million reduction in revenue. If I had to guess, that would be roughly a net impact of around 30 million for us for, for '23, as we kind of look at some of the other revenue sources and how we're currently trending as of June. So if I had to give you an estimate today, and again, it is simply just an estimate, you're looking at about a $30 million loss, loss overall within the general fund in fiscal year 2023. Now, with that being said, as the Chairwoman stated, we always take our next year and we base it off of the millage rate that's adopted for the previous year. So again, then you're looking at a $54 million reduction in revenue in '24, which obviously we don't have a budget prepared for, to address that scenario. So that would be one of the items that we'd have to overcome as we move forward.
Or we could just postpone the budget vote, right? That would be another option.
Either way, you, it would still be ha, whether it's tonight or later date, it would be an ob- obstacle that we'd have to come, overcome, and one of the biggest areas that we always seen in the recession is primarily cuts, as you look at capital is the first to go. That's 12 million, but that's all the capital. So then you're looking at operations and personnel is realistically where those additional cuts would have to come from.
But we're also not going to talk about the 60-some services that we offer, which is about 45 more than we're required to by law. So just out of curiosity, about what would the interest payment on a $30 million TANs note cost the taxpayers?
So with the, it, because it's been a few years since we borrowed, and obviously the feds have increased the rates, we'd have to look at that based on the sizing. It, it very much bases on current rate of the market as of the day you borrow and the size in which you borrow from, borrow at. So we do know what we used to pay several years ago was, you know, 400, 400,000 with an interest rate that was next to nothing. That will not be the case anymore. It'll be, it'll be significantly higher.
But it'll be significantly less than 19 million.
So it would be significantly less than what we had borrowed at our peak, but as you, as you know, as we improved our position, we were able to decrease the TANs over a period of time. We didn't go from 120 million to zero overnight. It was a step-down approach. The last year that we, I think we even borrowed internally was like 30 million, give or take. So, and we were able to step that down, but at the peak, it was 120 million per year to, to borrow in TANs.
I guess it's, it's light, so you probably missed my tongue-in-cheek that the interest we would have paid.
Yeah.
Would have been less than the 19 million dollar reduction.
Sure, yes.
I know it's late, I'm sorry.
I got you, sorry. I was, I was trying to do math in my head as that was going through, so apologize.
Those comments made me recall the days where we did have a cut in our budget, and as one of the speakers shared, we are still reeling from that rollback rate where we did have that cut some seven-odd years later. And as persons have reminded us, we still are not at 2009 staffing levels because of the recession we experienced then. So what we'd essentially be doing is going further backwards instead of forward and providing the level of service that I think our citizens are expecting of us. I also would like to share that this also reminds me of the conversation I did have with Commissioner Burrow with respect to rolling back the millage and utilizing funds from our American Rescue Plan Act dollars. While that is an option, when we decided to increase public safety salaries, at the same time we had that vote, we stated that we will look for the general fund to cover that increase instead of go to the American Rescue Plan Act funds, because it violates sound financial principles to utilize one-time money for recurring costs. So much so that when I went and visited the three rating agencies in New York to advocate for Cobb County, that they asked me specifically about what we were going to do to address that. And I'm very concerned that if we were to go to that source of funds, we will jeopardize our AAA credit rating, which we have enjoyed for now 26 years for two of the agencies. We're just waiting to hear back from one other agency if we're going to maintain a AAA bond rating. Which is to say that all of the decisions we make have a resultant impact in our ability to operate. So a savings today may result in a higher credit rating tomorrow, and if we do have to get tax anticipation notes to continue the operation of our government, it's going to cost us more to operate our government. So it's, we either pay now or we pay later, but someone will have to pay, as I assure you today, we are still paying from the cuts that were made in 2016. So this is not easy for anyone. Our hearts do feel for everyone who is having to endure inflation as we all are up here. But I'm also very concerned that if we don't make certain decisions today, you will have more dire discussions next year, as Commissioner Gamble implied. There are many services that we provide that are not necessary. We do not need to have parks. We do not need to have libraries. Those are not required services. But when we attempt to even consider cutting those, those are the services that fill this room, because they add significantly to the quality of life of our citizens. So as we consider the potential of rolling back the millage rate to the tune of two to five or eight mil, eight dollars a month, we could end up having drastic repercussions in how we serve our citizens. With that, Commissioners, again, please know that we are voting on Commissioner Gamble's substitute motion to roll back at this time. We've had discussion. I'm going to call the question. Her motion fails two to three with Commissioners Sheffield, Commissioners Cupid, excuse me, Chairwoman Cupid and Commissioner Richardson voting in opposition. I would like to revert back to our original motion, which is for us to keep our millage rate the same as 2022, for our county general fund, our county fire fund, our county debt service fund, the Cumberland Special Service District, and the Six Flags Special Service District. Is there a second?
There doesn't need to be a second. The, the, when the substitute fails, automatically rolls ba, rolls back, it automatically goes back to that original motion.
Okay, and it was second for discussion?
Yeah, I, I, go ahead. Bill, just to continue off the conversation that we had before the previous motion just failed, back in 2016, when, or 2016, 2017, which resulted in the millage rate increase in 2018.
Eighteen, yes.
There was about a 30 million deficit, which of course the taxpayers were told was 30, 60, 90, 120 million dollars. It was just all over the place. But in reality, the board had spent money on a bridge over 285, and it also allocated money to multiple SPOS projects that were not originally budgeted. Therefore, by rolling back the millage rate, essentially this would ensure that the board would not be allocating general fund dollars to SPOS projects, like we know is currently being discussed, for some shortages. So that is also one reason why we had the shortfall that resulted in the millage rate increase of 2018, was because of expenditures the board had approved that was not budgeted.
From serving, yes, I, I don't, I can't speak to that from serving on this board, but I do know that we have a motion and a second for the original motion. Is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Richardson, I believe, had a comment initially, and then I'll come to you, Commissioner Burrow.
Yeah, it was my original commentary around really, you know, as far as the substitute motion that was brought about, neither one of those proposals that I had heard from either one of you, and so it's hard for me to confer or conjecture upon what that could mean or the ramifications, and I know just from the budget conversations I've had with staff and how deep those, the ramifications of those types of cuts and the offsetting benefit to the community would not necessarily match. And so for me, it's hard to see those budget proposals as sustainable. Now, what I am committed to, and I've certainly shared with my community members, is looking at the next round of how we look at our budget, see if there are services that we want to reduce, see if there are areas where there are, you know, just desires for, for increased efficiency, and certainly there have been a lot of conversations about how all of our internal operations work. I know in the last two-year budget cycle, when we, when we started that, each department came up and actually gave a full tell-all on everything going on internally. And, you know, as far as the budget is concerned, I know we're not necessar, that's not what's before us here, but, you know, I, I don't necessarily agree with everything that's being brought at this point in time. However, I understand that it's all a compromise. Each one of us, major, supermajority of us on the board have had advocated for certain aspects to be a part of that budget, and that we did make some commitments from a financial perspective, and, and certainly share in, in the passion around, behind some of the particular requests. So I do understand, we are a board that is representing the county in full, which means it's not my way or the highway, it's, it's a collective agreement that we have to come to in order to, to move forward, and, and the goal is to be stewards of, of the resources that are before us. And while a rollback has been something brought before, brought to us by the community as a request, again, it's just some of those considerations in making sure we do understand how the taxes are, how they are structured, and where those exemptions exist. I have heard a lot of concern for those that are renters. Absolutely correct. My heart goes out for, for that component, and, I mean, I've been a renter myself. It's, it's, it's tough, and our tax code has never been favorable for the renters in our community, and I believe that there are some options that we can pursue to try to identify that relief, and that is something that I know other members of the community would like to partner with me on. But as far as the homeowner's perspective is concerned, that homestead exempt exemption is there to protect your increase in your assessment. We don't see that increase. When your assessment value goes up, we don't get that except for through the fire fund, which again, is where I said, that's where you're going to feel something if you own a home. Otherwise, you shouldn't see any increase beyond what you've been paying every single year. So it's, that's a piece, but also just to make sure that everybody understands, when we set a millage rate, it's the same millage rate for residential and commercial property. It's all collected within one. We don't get to differentiate between households and commercial property. So everything that you see, everything that's growing, we only get to set that one millage rate. It's applicable across all properties across the county, and that total digest increase is what we're seeing as a result of certainly inflated assessments, and, and some of that genuine growth that does exist within parts of the county. So, so these are just some of the things that we're considering, and then, not to ever put the school board down, but there's a, a range of things that we have to cover with our budget, considering that we, it's almost 225% more than, as far as the millage rate that's set here, and, for, for the school board. There, and we don't have any jurisdiction or control over that millage rate. Certainly there are some opportunities for collaboration and partnership, that's also been heard, but they are a separate government entity, and we do respect that. But still, all in all, not only do we have to cover all of those county services, we also have to cover the court system. It's every single court. It's the tax commissioner's office, it's the tax assessment office. It's, you know, our police, they have to, have a dive team, i- i- the SWAT team. There, there are all kinds of intricacies that extend for the services that are provided to the members in our community, and knowing that we would have to identify 40 to 50 million dollars' worth of cuts in an already very shopped budget overnight would be, you would feel it. There's no way around it. You would feel that for this, it will be, you will feel the increase in the fire fund increase as far as I believe, you know, around, I forgot what the, the figure was on that, but that will be felt, but that's where I'm saying I want to look for those opportunities for where we can improve our tax code designation. So, that, again, we don't have control over the school board, but that is where most people are seeing. I, I brought my, you might want to see my assessment. I have it here for the record as well. That's where the increase is. So, that's, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow.
First of all, Commissioner Richardson, I apologize that I didn't give you my proposal of the .21 mils, but I didn't have the support to move forward with that, and I, I actually didn't expect the last amendment to pass either, but, I, I mean, I didn't get support to, to reduce it with a compromise, and so that's where we are. Bill, my question is, if we vote to, for this, it's all inclusive of the school board, the way it's written?
There, there's two items. So the item before you is just the county's portion. The item following that will be to ratify the school board's action.
Okay, well then why is it all in here, and debt service, fund?
So debt service used to be our GO bond. You'll notice that is zero. So our GO bonds are paid off, so you're going to see general, fire, debt service, Cumberland Special Service District, and the Six Flags Special Service District. Those millage rates are what you're voting on in this item. The following item is to, to adopt the Board of Education's resolution for their 2023 county-wide school taxes. So again, this is...
This is our special service district.
That's correct. Cumberland Special Services District and Six Flags are, are part of this vote.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Commissioner Sheffield, did you have any comments? I just wanted to also share another comment, because there were remarks made about renters. As I shared in one of our prior hearings, our tax policy in Cobb County favors homeownership. So those who are renting from someone who owns a single-family home, you're unable to obtain that homestead exemption, and it's possible, as has been inferred by some landlords, that those tax increases would be passed along to renters. But I can share with you, from my research of tax policy, that the contributor of our housing unaffordability is not referred to as being impacted by local taxes, but by supply and demand, that we simply have more people that need housing than people who can get it. And so there are people who would typically buy a home, who are now having to rent, which is forcing out people who typically rent, and we're seeing that cost burden just increase significantly for all homeowners, irrespective of income levels. I did look at tax policy, and the one tax policy that can have the greatest impact that I'd be happy to discuss beyond today's budget hearing is taxing land versus taxing buildings, and that has the most direct impact towards preserving affordability of residential properties. I'm open to looking at how we can relieve that burden, as Commissioner Richardson shared... I'm open to looking at how we can relieve that burden as Commissioner Richardson shared, but this is a layered issue beyond just looking at today's vote. What I would like to see, however, is the support of us increasing our supply, particularly when we have our zoning hearings and we have no one advocating for us to build. And so if we're not building, again, there's going to be that pinch when it comes to demand, and people are going to pay more for housing, which is going to increase your cost of housing. So again, I look forward to us having that discussion, but us reducing the millage rate and sensitivity to that, I have not seen reflected in the research when it comes to housing affordability. So with that, commissioners, we have a motion, and we have a second. I'm going to call the question. The motion passes 3-2 with Commissioners Burrow and Gamble in opposition. Bill, please tee up our next agenda item.
Yes, Chairwoman. And the next item before you today is to ask the Board of Commissioners to adopt the Board of Education's resolution establishing the 2023 county-wide school tax for maintenance and operations of schools at 18.700 mills, the county-wide school tax for construction bonds at 0.00 mills, the Marietta Property Annex 1995 through 2004 at 0.00 mills, as required by law, and authorize the chairwoman to execute the millage resolution from the Cobb County Board of Education.
Thank you, Bill. We've had discussions at a prior, at a prior hearing to address whether or not the commission has discretion to modify the school millage. Bill, can you please address that before we vote?
Certainly, as part of the Georgia Constitution, the Board of Education, which is a separate government entity, has the right to be able to set their own millage rate. And the Georgia Constitution says that the taxing authority, which is the Cobb BOC, shall adopt it. You have no discretion in order for you to be able to do it. There's been numerous cases related to this, and they're the only ones that have the vested right to fix it, and you have no discretion about whether you approve it or not.
Okay, thank you. With that, commissioners, I move that we approve the motion as it has been presented.
Second, I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So just to kind of trail down that, in the situation that we voted no, what would be the next action after that?
Well, I'd hate to anticipate what the action for the school board would be, but I would imagine it'd be some sort of litigation, DEC action, saying that you have to approve it. And it would be swift and quick for them to be able to budget the way they need to. So.
Commissioner Burrow.
And aren't they required to send their millage to the state by the 31st of July like we are?
Yes, as part of the package that we send in, that Bill's teams put together, is they've already sent over their, what they've set it at, they provided us to that, and it's part of the package that the chairwoman was signed tonight.
And Commissioner, if I may add, ours is actually due to the Department of Revenue at 12 o'clock tomorrow. So just to clarify.
This is off the radar here, but aren't all counties, because Fulton County has advertised it on the news, they're having public hearings in August.
So we, that was a question that came up today. So it's based on when our assessments are, when those are, and then working through our tax commissioner, I believe it has to do with our due dates. But Carla would have to answer that, would probably answer that much better than I could. But I do know that we will have to have the documents signed today, and then they will bring it down by 12 noon tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion on this motion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Bill, we have one more.
One more.
Matter in this presentation.
Okay, so our final item tonight is to adopt the proposed FY24 budget. And as required by Georgia law and county code, we did conduct our public hearing, meet the necessary advertising requirements, and then we are asking the board to adopt tonight. So with that, I do ask the Board of Commissioners to adopt the FY24 budget and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. I'll move that we approve the motion as it has been presented.
Second, and one comment. So I've provided my comment on the budget in general, and certainly with constituents, but just for those that are following along and want to stay engaged after this, there is a, basically, a document that we're working on to make it a bit more readable for the community to understand exactly where your dollars are going and where we can identify potential opportunities.
Thank you. As part of this discussion, Bill, I just asked that you put up that document that shows where we are budgeting funds differently for this fiscal year. At the top of the page, for those who are viewing, the proposed 2024 budget is at $583 million. The adopted 23 budget was at $564 million. The proposed increase is for $19.3 million. $12 million of those dollars comes from the payroll adjustments that I talked about with respect to public safety and us increasing those salaries. They also cover a 3% merit increase for non-sworn employees. It also covers a 3% step increase for public safety. The step increase is part of their stepping grade program that ensures that they will be getting a raise each year commensurate with their service years and their performance. We also covering increases in healthcare and pension costs, as well as covering the financial impact agenda items that we approved over 2023. As there was some discussion, there was about a little less than $3 million, $2.6 million that we did approve over the last fiscal year, which was not in the budget. And about 75% of those costs were associated with public safety, and public safety, including police, emergency management, and the DA's office. There are two additional agenda items that helps to cover information services. That gets us to about 73% of our budget. 73% of our budget also includes rising departmental costs. These are costs that are out of their control, that are costs that you're having to bear when it comes to increased fuel costs, increased credit card fees. The only discretion that this board has had with respect to our budget is the remaining $5 million that is below the screen that I do want to walk through with you. The first $1 million is with respect to expanding microtransit. This is on-demand transit similar to an Uber or Lyft system that we have currently operating in a spoke-in-wheel system, spoken hub system in our county. You have three lines that connect to a node. So those that are not in that area have a gap in transit service. And I've heard from persons in our nonprofit sector and Cobb Works that there are employees who are unable to access transit to become gainfully employed at the time where we have the most opportunity for employing people within the county. And if people are not working, they are unable to contribute to our county. And so the cost to fill in that entire spoken hub system would have been $4 million, and this would have covered our citizens mostly in need of this service in southwest Cobb. However, as Commissioner Richardson shared, we all had to compromise. So instead of covering this service to the tune of $1 million so that we can help to get people to work, we're covering it to the tune of $1 million, which is 25%. So we'll have to make a very difficult decision to see who are the residents worthy of the service that we had to cut to so that we can provide them service. Please note that the transit levels that we have here in the county don't even cover the cuts that were made to transit in 2011. We're hoping that we'll be able to address outstanding transit need in next year's referendum. But for persons who can't work today, saying that you're going to address it in a referendum next year doesn't help them put food on the table today. The next requirement is the Call Before You Dig program. It's a $1 million impact to our budget. This is a state mandate that we have to provide this service. So if you hear unfunded mandates, that's when the state passes a law that local government has to fund without state funding. And so this increase is to cover our required cost of that program. The next is professional services for permitting, as it was lauded that we do a good job in attracting business. However, we've heard over the past couple of years that businesses have had a challenging time through our permitting process, and we recognize that some of it has to do with the alignment of where staff is located. Some of this also has to do with workforce challenges that everyone is having. And so to ensure that we have the staff in place to respond to people who want to do business or expand business here in Cobb, we've put aside $1 million towards that. Even though we do tax businesses and residents at the same rate, because there is a lesser tax burden that our businesses do provide generally in their use of services to Cobb, having a strong business community helps to offset the tax burden to our residents. This seemed like a worthwhile expenditure to make sure that we're being responsive to concerns that we have heard. The next one has to do with emergency shelter contingency. We have had an increase of people who are unable to afford living in Cobb County, and we've heard from some of our nonprofits that they are having more requests for services when it comes to homelessness. We've also had a burden, as Commissioner Sheffield shared, just for emergencies, when there are fires, when there's inclement weather, and finding emergency shelter for persons. There was a request for about $750,000 to $1 million for this line item to address identified need today, which will not address the outstanding needs for tomorrow that we're learning about. We've cut that down to $500,000, already knowing that that's not going to be enough to even help everyone that's in need of help today. But it's something to make sure that the bottom in Cobb County doesn't have a hole in it should somebody find out that they can't stay in their current place of residence. The next line item is for $500,000 for the Family Advocacy Center, shared through the DA's office. This has been marketed in Cobb over the past, I want to say, three to four years since prior to the pandemic. This enables responsive services for those who are facing domestic crisis here in Cobb County, whether it's domestic abuse or family abuse or child abuse within that home. There's a one-stop shop, so someone who is in that very challenging circumstance doesn't have to go to individual organizations to get help at a time of crisis. They can go to one, they can go to one facility. Over the last year, we funded support for the DA to begin building that site out. We've made a commitment to actually put people in that building so that they can respond to services. The next line item is for communications. It has been shared with you that Cobb County funds or staffs our departments significantly lower than other metro areas, and I know you don't want to compare, but when it comes to the burden that's on our staff to provide a level of service that anyone expects where they live, we have failed shortly when it comes to providing robust enough communication services so that we can even share with you information to keep you informed, whether it's through the budget or other means. Some good things that are going on here, some pressing needs of the county. This line item funds three positions, one of them which we'll be able to staff, or help with the staffing of a call center that we plan to have here in the county. The other two, I believe, are to help with other sundry needs when it comes to responding to citizens' communication needs. The other we have for information services, we have cybersecurity impact to our county. As most of you know, this is a growing need of concern for businesses and local governments alike. So we have a line item to make sure that we are providing adequate coverage or minimal coverage, because I'm sure they can utilize more staff here than the few that we're proposing. This also helps with the integration of our strategic plan so that we are able to make sure that we're operating as we are committing to operate through our plan. We have a countywide grant writer. As many of you have heard, there are millions and billions of federal dollars that are helping states and local governments that we have a challenging time accessing because I believe at this time, we do not have a grant writer here at the county. For a county of 800,000 people, for a county that's the sixth wealthiest county, where you don't want to look to the other counties that have grant writers, we don't have one. And I think for us to take advantage of the opportunity that we have to offset any financial burden on you, I think it's incumbent upon us to see if there are grant dollars to offset the financial impact that you may have to bear as our taxpayer. So we're funding one grant writer through this. We also have reclassification of two positions. I'm not sure of one, but both of them, but I know one of them is associated with our state courts office. They want to make sure that their records are up to date in current so that they are not arresting people that don't need to be arrested, that everything is aligned within their department. And right now, they're having to use humans to actually reconcile those systems as opposed to someone who could be classified, or say, human support, persons who are not classified to do that work are doing that work versus someone who has some specialization to make sure that their records are being reconciled. And I'm not sure, Bill, if that covers the one or both of those positions.
So there's really two parts to that. One is to assist with IT equipment within the court system globally, and then the other one is to assist with the Unified Court Case Management System additional workload that is resulting in that implementation.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. So with that $5 million, these are the initiatives that your commissioners in majority have chosen to support through this year's budget without anyone getting all that they desire. And on top of this, I didn't share, we do have a 1% decrease in our water transfer rate. We have an enterprise fund through our water bill because we service counties outside of Cobb County that pay into our water system. Because of that structure, we're able to transfer 10% of those funds to support the general fund. But there's a concern that if you use water funds for the general fund, you could be artificially increasing your water rate to take care of that 10% increase. And so there's been a desire to reduce that increase so that there is a more commensurate water rate to the expense of providing water to our citizens and to those that are utilizing our water outside of the county. So we have cut that enterprise transfer, I believe, $2.5 million.
That's correct. 1% reduction is about $2.5 million.
If we didn't do that water transfer reduction, we could have had more money, but we wanted to make sure we returned money back to the citizens. So even though there is going to be a water tax increase, it has been reduced because we are reducing that transfer to the water system. Finally, we have additional positions in fire and in 911 that has been requested in order for them to maintain their levels of, their level of service that you expect for them to provide. Some of them are just commensurate with our population increase. Nobody wants to hear that you have an increased response when there is a fire or an emergency because we didn't do our part to make sure that they were adequately funded. I thought it was important to walk through that as I perceive from some of the comments here today, that there may have been lacking in mindfulness of this decision that's being made here before you. None of these decisions were easy for these decisions I'm proposing with those discretionary dollars. We had several departments that told us real need, real need that they have that is going unmet. In fact, when we did have the departments meet with us last year, they requested 647 positions just to meet the need. These weren't positions asking for anything, anything that was beyond the service level that people were expecting from them. We provided them 150 positions, which is about 25% of their request. Commissioners, I'm asking for your support for the budget, the compromise that we've made during this biennial budget, knowing that next year we'll have an opportunity to look at everything holistically and see where we can do things differently. But I believe, based on the feedback that I've heard from all of you and the feedback that I've heard from our departments, that we are- that I've heard from our departments, that we are moving forward as thoughtful stewards of our county in supporting the budget that's here before you today. Are there any additional comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Burrow.
As I said before, this is the second year of a biennial, biennial budget. In the past, we have not approved or recommended new positions that they be, be done in a biennial, second-year budget. We've always asked that they come back the first of the year and plead their case, so I can't support the new, I can't support this budget.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
Bill, if I can just have you clarify some things, because I know in our discussions, I'm a little confused at what I heard today. So the $500,000 for the emergency shelter contingency, it was my understanding that this was just supposed to be for warming shelters, and it was going to be administered by EMA. Correct, or has that changed?
So it is placed as a contingency line within the EMA Emergency Management Budget itself. So it is controlled under the EMA Emergency Actions. So there was a discussion about initially, I think as to your point, one of the early conversations was warming shelters. It has been expanded to include emergency shelters. So that was warm, cold, fire, so on and so forth. And part of that discussion was, you know, initially talking about how that would be implemented. It, we, we are looking to partner with the nonprofit community to, who already provides that existing service, but it would be in those emergency basis needs only. It's not, not necessarily a day one, this is what it is. It's just as those emergency situations come up, through the EMA's operations, they would declare that this is an emergency situation, and the funds would be available to assist people seeking shelter at those times.
And so if we're going to take over that, then that means like the American Red Cross, who typically comes in and assists during these times, are we not going to be using their assistance anymore, or?
So again, I think, I don't think there's anything really changing. I think if there's a need that's going unaddressed, that's what these funds are for. It's not to supplant any additional funds that are already out there today. This is to address, if, if funds are no, are not available in the emergency situation, these would be available through EMA's operations to use to fill a need. But it is not to say we're no longer using this, or nonprofits are not doing that, is simply additional funds that could be utilized in emergency situations only.
Okay, because then, and I appreciate the MDJ's reporting, because that's usually where I learn about, a lot about the Cobb County government. But in here, it says that there would be support for areas, nonprofits combating evictions and homelessness. So is there anywhere in the budget that we have funding that's going for evictions or nonprofits that is out, I'm not talking outside of the general fund, only in the general fund, which is monies collected from the taxpayers?
No, there's no funds allocated within the general fund's budget, the proposed general fund's budget, that would provide any additional rental assistance, homelessness, or any of the items that you mentioned. There, there is simply, that, that line does not exist. And we did talk about, there's alternative through grants, through Emergency Rental Assistance Program that we've had ongoing through care, through the, the COVID response, as well as, I believe there's some nonprofits that are filling that need through our ARPA, American Recovery Act Plan. So that is, that is ongoing, but no general fund tax, Cobb County tax dollars are being used for that purpose.
And then to clarify, another statement in the article, as far as affordable housing woes, there's no funding coming out of the general fund going for affordable housing in this budget.
You are correct, Commissioner. There's no funds coming out of the general fund for affordable housing.
And then I don't know if Drew's going to run and hide when I ask this question, because I'm not sure if you're going to be able to answer it, Bill. But microtransit, it is my understanding, I thought we tried a program like this down in the South Cobb area several years ago, and then the program was ended because it was not successful, because people were not using the program. So two-part question, what happened to the funding that had been allocated there and not used? And then, again, we're doing another million, but is it going to be targeted for that same area, or is that to be determined, and will that be a board vote?
So Commissioner, I cannot answer that question for you.
Drew isn't here at this. Is Drew here?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll share that we currently still provide the Flex Bus Service. However, the way that it's drawn, it limits a lot of people who could utilize that service. And a lot of the comments shared has been that we do need to reassess where we have the boundaries, so that it could be better utilized. And so this would help to augment a service that is already in place.
And just to add to that service you mentioned about connecting people to employment opportunities, but I've also received a lot of emails from constituents that are having issues in, in making their doctor's appointments. There was a mention earlier of a gentleman that takes his wife to dialysis, and I have several constituents in, in District Four that, that, that really depends on that transportation to get to their doctor's appointments. So there's definitely a need there.
Hey, Drew.
I know you don't want to be part of this conversation.
Sorry. I came, I came as quick as I could. My apologies.
So my question was on the microtransit, because I believe three or four years ago, we had a microtransit program that we had down in the South Cobb area, and it was for a three-mile area, but the program was stopped because essentially, the program wasn't being used. So two-part question, what happened to the funding that had been allocated there? And then as far as this, you know, has it been chosen, what areas are going to be used, or will that be coming back for a board vote?
Absolutely. So a little bit of history, I believe was referenced earlier, that there were transit cuts around that 2009 timeframe, plus or minus, that there were some existing routes down in the South Cobb area that were cut as part of those cuts. In, in order to continue to provide service to an area that had transit service, the Flex program was created. And the Flex program, I don't, I don't have a, a map currently with me, but it's three distinct areas that allow for transportation. It's more of a curb-to-curb service within those areas. So if a ride is hailed within, within those three specific areas, it could either be within that same area, or it can be to a central collection point to then allow for that, that transfer onto a typical transit trip. The challenge is those, each of those routes were set up based on a fixed route, but they are more of a, the, the three distinct areas create challenges, where if someone lives in one of those areas but works in another area, it requires them to go from where they're being picked up to that collection point, then to their final destination. So it's an, it's an inefficient model in terms of, of that service. However, it is a service that, that is can, offered currently, that is within the budget. I, I don't have the exact number, but I believe it is order of magnitude about $500,000 that is currently in the budget to operate the Flex system. What, what this proposal would do would be to combine that area. We'd have to determine, based on the budget that is approved tonight by the board, exactly how large that area would be, but it would function very similar to a program that MARTA has launched very recently called The Reach, which would be a, a shared trip. As the transit staff describes it, it, it is in, still an A-to-B trip within one cohesive area, so it would combine those three areas. Again, the, the size of that area, budget-dependent. And then it may be, while it is a A-to-B service, it may be A-to-C-to-B, where, where it's, you pick up the, the bus service, it picks up someone else, and then drops you at your final destination, drops them at their final destination. So it becomes, it, it is similar to Uber or Lyft, but it is a transit trip still, in that it is a, a shared trip, and one that, that there would be, have to be commensurate pair of transit service offered as, as well.
Thank you, Drew. And then my last comment is on the water transfer. And this, again, we can address more when we come to the agenda item to increase the rates. But back in 2018, the Water Department had proposed a rate increase schedule that included an increase to ensure that there was a 10% transfer to the general fund budget indefinitely.
Again, I can't speak to that, having been on the board at that time, but I do know this is the lowest that, that water transfer, seeing that water transfer will be ever, from that 10%, down to 6%. So I commend the board for being mindful of how it will offset the rise in, in water fees for our citizens. Madam Chair? Yes, Commissioner.
Also, in 2016, it was supposed to go from seven to six, same as this year, but when the millage was rolled back to match the increase in the digest in 16, it went back up to 10%. And then we started it back over again in 19, 2019, and now it's seven to six percent.
And it's just an example, you can, you can try to diminish your costs now to end up just having to pay more later, or pay more somewhere else. With that, Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The budget passes 3-2 with Commissioners Burrow and Richardson in opposition. I'm sorry, Burrow and, excuse me, I need more, I need new glasses. Burrow and Gamble in opposition, sorry.
Chairwoman, if I may, I just would like to thank the board members, the county manager, our budget team for the, the work that they put in. I know we talked about this, this really started two years ago with the biennial, so I want to thank you all, I definitely want to thank my budget team. They, they keep us on track and make sure the numbers are right. And then also, all of your assistance for working with us, and especially mine, because that will be the one that gets me in the most trouble. Katie keeps us straight, makes we, make sure we show up to your all meetings on time, and we have what we need. So thank you all very much.
Ditto. Thank you. Thank you to you and the staff, and all of the department heads for speaking with us. This has not been an easy process, but I believe that we have a budget that will help us get through this next year, and hopefully be able to set this county up for continued success, for the consideration of our next biennial budget. With that, Commissioners, we are going to take, why don't we go ahead and take a break until 10:45? Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting tonight. We are now at our first public comment. Bill, I'll turn things over to you.
Sure, sure. As the board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the board. Comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and be heard by treating each other's with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And there is a track, a timer on the podium to keep track of your time. Chairwoman, I think some of the people that may have signed up may have left. If you give me the, I'll just go through the list and we can see what, who are there. Okay. Tracy Stevenson, Tracy Stevenson. Pam Riard. Ms. Rosman. Daniella Collins. Donald Barth.
Donald Barth, over here in Marietta. One more time to speak tonight, just to remind you, one of the things I heard a little while ago that really got me was when we got to the school board budget. Did you hear somebody say that the state constitution, we're going to go by the state constitution right now? I'm pretty sure that's what that man said. Where's that home rule when we needed it? Anybody know what happened to that home rule? Because I still think what you did was wrong, and you know what you did was wrong. Now, some of the things that come up is, Ms. Sheffield, I hear you talk about your area, and I understand the same thing for Marietta. I get the short end of the straw. I'm in Ward Seven. Ward Seven doesn't have a park. And I hear you talk about the library. Man, it is so hard to get everybody an equal share of the pie. And you, when you feel like you're being short-changed over in your district, stand up, holler. I do all the time. Mayor tells me I'm never going to see a park while he's the mayor. I'm not going to die if I don't have a park, but I understand your concern about the libraries and things like that. You did get a nice park out of the deal the other week. I don't have a park. But what we do, we come up here and we talk. I don't care how much smoke, how much lipstick you put on the pig, I know what my tax bill looks like. I know how much has gone up in the last three years. I also know that it's not a fair system, the way we're doing this. You, I think, made a comment before, it's done by the neighborhood. That guy over there has got a $400,000 house with granite countertops and air conditioning and all that. I don't. No, no, I don't. In fact, I have deferred maintenance. That means I live like a damn old man. I, that's what it means, deferred maintenance. But how am I being assessed the same value that somebody else is? So we need to fix that. That is not fair overall, and you know it and I know it. And that's how deferred maintenance, you know, can be one thing, it can be problematic, or, you know, I'm not in the same house, I don't have central heat and air, I don't have cement siding, I don't have everything, but I still live in a nice home, in a nice county, in a nice city. I'm not complaining about any of that. I just want you to remember, some of us were here tonight, some of us have been to the other meetings because of that. I went to a meeting the other week talking about the CCT, Cobb Link, whatever we're calling it this month. And one of the things I found is they were listening, at least. The idea of trying to put a station right there at Roswell Road and 41, if that place isn't already a cluster, add about 200 buses a day, and it's really going to be a mess. So, they at least listened, there's opportunity to put it in several locations that, what's the, what's the attraction to the bus? You've got to bring your car, park it there, and we'll get there. But at this point in time, we've got a mayor that's going against mixed-use development over there in Marietta. How cool would that be to have the mixed use in the old Harries? And what do we get out of that? We get people that can walk and ride the bus. Is it going to happen in my lifetime? Probably not, you know? So, what we got to do is work on things that work for everybody. And when it comes down to it, I understand Ward Seven is not the pet child of Marietta, you know? And I understand that your war, your district down there, I don't know what district I'm still in. State still says I'm in three, or two, I'm sorry. And, you know, if I'd had my way, we would be doing the affordable housing with Reginald Copeland. I would have had him run for the office. And we talked about that, attainable housing versus affordable housing. If it's not affordable, it's not attainable. And you know there was some boards set up with some rich people saying, let's make this attainable. Attainable for who? Let's have some affordable.
Mr. Barth, your time's up. Mr. Delano? Mr. Delano? Mr. Thielen?
Bill, are you reading from the second list now? Okay.
Chairwoman, thank you for having us here tonight. I just wanted to come up and just say, you know, thank you for hearing all the people tonight and.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your gratitude. If you can help us in stating your name for the record and then.
Yes, Samuel Thielen, sorry.
That's okay, Samuel.
Yeah, and I, like, I was for, I asked you all to not vote for the budget, you know, and, but I'm just thankful for y'all for allowing people to be here. I do wish, though, it seems like the whole process could be done better, and maybe we could have come to it earlier, make it more available to people to be involved and actually know what's going on. I don't know if there's anything that we can do about that going forward to try to make it more available to people. That's, that's pretty much what I had to say. I, I did, I will say, I will be going to the, the school board. I went to the school board, the last school board meeting, I was there a little bit late because of the time, I got the wrong time, I guess, but I will be going to the school board and will be continuing to be back here, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cutliffe?
Hey there, Kevin Cutliffe, District Three. Yeah, I just wanted to quickly say, thank you all for everything tonight, because, yeah, it's been a very long night. I just wanted to reflect Monique's comments, which I really resonated with, because I definitely agree that there was a lot of a talk about affordable housing tonight, and how we should be there for the affordable housing, for the renters, for the tax bill. So I definitely hope that when zoning notices come up, that there is support for that affordable housing, because it certainly sounds like there's a lot of opposition for that housing when it actually comes up. Thank you.
Chairwoman, that concludes this poll speaker for this evening.
Thank you. With that, we will now move to our consent agenda. The matters for the consent agenda scroll on the screen prior to our meeting and will scroll on the screen thereafter. Commissioners, don't forget, we had two matters at the top of our meeting added to consent agenda, and that was the rental agreement with Lassiter, and also the workers' compensation claim. And we also withdrew Agenda Item Number 16, which was through Fire Services to authorize the purchasing director to purchase Skydio drones. So with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda, as it has been revised, and to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now at, we'll leave our regular tab, and the first item is through our water system.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. The water system requests the Board of Commissioners to approve the water system's schedule of rates, charges and fees to become effective October 1st, 2023, which includes a 7.5% increase in retail water rates, an 8.5% increase in sewer, retail sewer rates, and an increase in the base fee. A rate adjustment is needed due to increased costs of chemicals, biosolids disposal, wholesale water and materials. The rate adjustment is also necessary to fund planned infrastructure replacement and upgrades. For the average residential water and sewer customer, the rate increase would result in a monthly bill increase of $5.45. Even with the proposed rate adjustments, our rates will remain among the lowest, or even the lowest of the, in the metro Atlanta area.
With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the Cobb County Water System's schedule of rates, charges and fees, which would become effective October 1st, 2023.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. Okay, that didn't work. Okay, by show of hands, we'll call the question. Those who are in support, and those who are opposed. Okay, we have the motion carrying 3-2 with Commissioners Gamble and Burrow in opposition. Thank you. We'll now move on to our transportation tab.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. The Department of Transportation has six items for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Deep South Industrial Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $1,332,730 for resurfacing 2023 county-wide crack ceiling. Project number X2921, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next items recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Two Final to the Contract with Accelerate Construction LLC, a savings to the project in the amount of $74,960.72 for drainage system repairs on Chesty Drive. Project number B2226, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number One Final to Project number B2286, to the 2021 county-wide unit price contract with DNH Construction Company Incorporated, savings to the project in the amount of $88,697.04 for emergency drainage repairs on Chadwick Road, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
The system. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Chattahoochee River Trail Pilot Phase Two, Project number B2432, and authorize final negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, Thomas &amp; Hutton Engineering Company.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Any, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners authorize procurement of traffic signal controllers in an amount not to exceed $561,150, utilizing available state contracts for traffic signal timing, SCATS controllers, Project number B2562, and further authorize the corresponding budget transaction.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item tonight is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Supplemental Agreement Number One to the Consultant Services Agreement with Calix Engineers Incorporated, Doing Business as NV5 Engineers and Consultants Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $323,593.07 for engineering services of Old 41 Highway, Phase Two, Project number X2609, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to our Support Services tab, and our two items will be for Information Services.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. Both of our items this evening are joint items between Information Services and Property Management. Our first item is to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase CityWorks software, maintenance and support from SHI International Corporation under provisions of an Omnia Partners IT Solutions contract in an amount not to exceed $199,933.36, 2016 SPOS Project X0020, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our second item this evening is to request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Woolport Inc. under provisions of a General Services Administration contract in an amount not to exceed $399,106.60 for the CityWorks Asset Management and Work Order Management Implementation Project and System Support. 2016 SPOS Project X0020, authorize a 10% contingency fund in an amount not to exceed $36,910.60, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now at our second public comment, we have no speakers, we are at appointments. We have one appointment, and I move that we approve the reappointment of Dr. Carol Holtz to the Highland Rivers Health.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries, maybe, maybe, maybe not. Let's see. Okay. Burrow, you're needed? No, ma'am. Okay. Carries 4-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. All right, we are at Commissioners' Public Address, and once the slides queue up, we'll begin with Commissioner Gamble.
Summer is here, and it's just in time for the National, Annual National Night Out Event. This is a national event to bring the public safety community and the citizens they serve together for an evening of fun. The event will be held at Jim R. Miller Park from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Tuesday, August 1st. The Cobb County Police Department, Cobb County Fire Department, will have a wide variety of their equipment on display, including specialty teams such as SWAT, bomb, K-9, dive, motors and medical operations. Food trucks and dessert vendors will be at the park as well. There will also be giant inflatables for the children to enjoy, and the School of Rock will be on the main stage throughout the evening. We hope you can join us then. And in about 10 and a half hours, we will have our second continuing conversations with my annual meetup, which promotes community engagement and supports healthy living. So again, tomorrow morning at 9:30 a.m., we are going to walk and have a conversation at Lost Mountain Park, which is located at 4845 Dallas Highway in Powder Springs. We will meet in the senior center parking lot and go from there. Hope to see you then. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Sure thing. It's from the office. As you know, we've got the Capstone interns working really hard. One of those projects is the Renters' Bill of Rights, and there's a survey that they've put together, so definitely asking for those that are in, that are renting to please fill out the survey. And if you know someone who is, please share the survey with that individual so that we can continue our data collection on that and help formulate that Renters' Bill of Rights. They are gearing up to give that presentation to our local delegation. Next up, Cobb's Home Buyer Empowerment Seminar. This is this weekend. Do you want to buy a home, but you are. Do you want to buy a home, but you are unsure of where to start? Are you looking for resources to make home ownership achievable? Please join us for the Cobb 2023 Home Buyers Empowerment Seminar this Sunday, July 30th, at the Cobb Civic Center from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Some things to expect: backpack giveaways, keynote speakers, an overview of the mortgage process, a snapshot of the local market, affordable housing options, preparing for homeownership, Q&amp;A with housing professionals, and so much more. Please go to D2Cobb.com/events for more information and to register today. From the community. Back the need. Backpacks and school supplies needed. Kids Care and Cobb Police are requesting donations of new school supplies now through July 29th. This is led by a kid, just letting you guys know. Kids Care is a pretty awesome organization. Donations can be dropped off at the Cobb County Police Department Headquarters in all five precincts during regular business hours. Number two, at the Cobb Civic Center. Three, at the drive-by and drop-off event July 29th from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Cobb Civic Center. Please visit kids-care2018.org for more information. And artists needed. Celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month in September by participating in an art show. Nuestras huellas, our footprints, the cultural impact we are leaving on modern-day America. The exhibit at the Sewell Mill Library and Cultural Center will feature local Hispanic artists in Georgia. Applications are being accepted through July 29th. You can email applications to lexi.brendel@cobbcounty.org by July 29th. That concludes my community announcements.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you. The District Three fishing rodeo this weekend was a huge success and so much fun. Thanks to Michael Brantley and our park staff and all the participants at Ebenezer Downs Park. The, we had great prizes and great contestants. First place went to Anthony Brock, who caught an 18-and-a-quarter-inch catfish. The fish is almost as big as he is. Second place went to Alvaro Martinez, who caught an 11-inch brim. And third place went to Skylar Jones, who caught a 10-and-a-half-inch bass. These kids, it was so heartwarming to see the kids fishing and their parents and grandparents and siblings all participating. So it was a great event. I think we had about 46, 47 contestants. And I also want to give a shout out to Shelley. She stayed the whole time and got some great photos and worked with us, too. So also, while we were doing the fishing rodeo, the Boy Scouts from Troop 2319 are building picnic benches for the park for an Eagle Scout project. So they'll be back when it's finished to get recognized at a board meeting, but the bottom picture is Troop 2319 out of Unity North Atlanta Church. So thanks to the Boy Scouts, too. And the next one, the final one, is in Commissioner Sheffield's district, so I hope you have as much fun as we did. Okay. United Military Care is hosting the Week Care Veterans Fair, August 4th and 5th, Friday, August 4th, from 8:30 to 4:00 at the Cobb Civic Center, and Saturday, August 5th, 8:30 to 2:00 p.m. It's free for veterans. Anyone is welcome, and there's no appointments needed. There's over 100 vendors that will be there. The State Veterans Affairs Commission will be there. You can sign up for benefits and get your questions answered. It's a great event. Last year was their first one, and this year they're doing it on two days instead of just the one. So come out, we're calling all veterans. And then on August the 9th, Wednesday, August 9th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta at Town Center, 625 Big Shanty Road in Kennesaw. DOT will host an open house with me at, to review the draft concept and learn more about the Nuneid Creek Trail Extension Study. It's a drop-in community open house. So please come out and attend, and for more information, you can go to CobbCounty.org/trail-extension. And then, I don't have the slide, but I'd just like to say thank you to finance, county manager, staff, and all the participants through this budget process and mileage. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
District Four News and Updates. Join me for District Four, District Four's monthly In-the-Zone Community Meeting on Wednesday, July 26th at 7:00 p.m. I will discuss July's zoning decisions and our August zoning applications. Our monthly In-the-Zone Community Meetings are a great way to learn firsthand about zoning applications and potential development in District Four. Please email hannah.lamons@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. It is our hope that you will be able to join us. Love to Fish, Can You Bait a Hook? If the answer is yes, join us for our fourth and final fishing rodeo for the summer. The event is open to children ages three to 16. The event will be on Saturday, July 29th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Fehr Family Park, located at 4570 Old West Side Road in Powder Springs. Trophies will be awarded for the five biggest fish. The entry fee is $5 per child. Join your friends at The Battery Atlanta for Cobb County Second Annual First Responders 5K on August 5th at 8:00 a.m. Walk, jog, or run in person or virtual. This family-friendly event is for all fitness levels, and it will include first responder vehicles and displays, field games with the Atlanta Braves blooper, and a performance from the Braves heavy hitters. The 5K walk-run will support our Cobb County first responders and is also a Peachtree qualifier. Visit ccpsf.org to register. And finally, congratulations to Brickmore Development for approaching the final stretch of its redevelopment project at the old K-Mark Plaza on Mabelton Parkway. The redevelopment transformed a former K-Mark box to accommodate for retailers to include Burlington, Ross, Five Below, Hibbett Sports, and DD Discounts. There was a near scare last Friday at Ross not opening as scheduled, but our fire department staff stepped up to ensure that the new employees were able to start their new jobs on the date promised. So thank you so much to Chief Johnson and his team. The plaza is located at 5590 Mabelton Parkway in Mabelton. There will be an official grand opening and ribbon cutting in the coming weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ross not being open is an emergency for some of us. Can dress well for less at Ross, I assure you that. Moving on to the Chairwoman's update. Thank you, Commissioner Richardson, for observing the police department's partnership with Kids Care for the back-to-school drive. Encourage people to pick up school supplies and donate them to one of the three locations that Commissioner Richardson shared. You can always donate to the police headquarters as well, right here in Marietta through July 29th. I will be having a volunteer meeting coming up soon, Wednesday, August 2nd, at Sewell Mill. For anyone who's interested in volunteering in Cobb, you can learn of different opportunities, whether it's through my office, a board or authority, or any county organized events. If you're interested in volunteering, please look out for my newsletter this week, and there will be a link to register. Just today, we had the unique opening of the Hopper in the Cumberland area. It is Cobb County's first autonomous shuttle vehicle. It will be on the pedestrian bridge between the Galleria and the Braves Stadium, and rides are offered for free to the public. There are two routes. One again is over the bridge, and the other one, I believe, is through the Galleria Office Park. Want to thank our Cobb DOT for working with the Cumberland CID for this initiative, and should this pilot be successful, they'll be looking to expand this service. I'll be having town hall meetings coming up in the month of August through October, and we'll be announcing locations in the newsletter, and it will give us opportunity to talk about tonight's meeting as well as other initiatives on the hearts and minds of our citizens. And with that, we do have a public meeting to help shape the Austell Powder Springs Trail. There will be a scoping meeting on Wednesday, July 26th, that's tomorrow, and you'll have an opportunity to speak with the staff from the City of Austell, from Cobb County, the City of Powder Springs, and the Atlanta Regional Commission. And the goal of the project is to help connect the City of Austell and Powder Springs. Your feedback is important, and encourage you again to go to the meeting on Wednesday evening, which is tomorrow, almost today, and will be at the Red Mill Complex in the City of Austell. With that, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for all who worked diligently on our budget and provided feedback to the Board, and we look forward to having another successful fiscal year as we lead into our next biennial budget. We'll have more robust discussions moving forward on what we can do to address some of the concerns heard here tonight, but I truly appreciate everyone's participation. With that, have a good evening.